I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this ninth day of November 21. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergency Statewide Requirement to Wear Masks in K-12 Schools issued August 12th of 21, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's Guidance for K-12 Schools and the School Board's 2122 Reopening Plan adopted August 10th of this year, it's determined that physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Thus, there will be limited public seating available on a first-come, first-served basis beginning shortly before this meeting. Members of the public, as always, are able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. We welcome everyone joining us here, present here this evening, as well as our viewing public. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please take the verbal role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. So would all present please join me now in a moment of silence? And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
That leads us into our student, employee, and public awards and recognition part of tonight's program, and I turn the program over to our presenter, Vice Chair Mrs. Melnick.
Tonight, we as a board are pleased to announce the school board recognition recipients for November 9th, 2021. Mrs. Franklin.
This evening, we are excited to recognize Candace Harris as the Virginia Art Education Association's Middle School Art Educator of the Year. Mr. Harris has accomplished amazing things for our education program at older nations who'll have to teach and as a working artist, both locally and nationally. He utilizes enhanced on teaching style to encourage students to work collaboratively in their art-making experience. Additionally, he shares his immense knowledge and skills with other art professionals during professional development process and workshops. He encourages his students to be creative as well as tackle challenges without a box thinking, but this process is unlimited to his students. He was the mastermind of the VBCPS during an art show, a guest artist during the Tidewater Virginia Art Education Association several workshop, and has served on a number of VBCPS visual arts committees. Additionally, his most recent personal artist of the test edition at the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art Showcase is his partnership with the environmental center and Oyster Restoration. His true level of art education can be seen in his professional work, teaching, and leadership. Congratulations Candace Harris for this tremendous honor.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin.
The next, next we are honored to recognize the recipient of this year's Virginia Art Education Association Retired Art Teacher of the Year, Stephanie Slate. We all recognize the tremendous loss that can be felt when a talented teacher retires. However, we have been lucky to retain her as a part-time teacher at both Tallwood and Thurgood Elementary Schools, so she is still able to share her knowledge with our students. More so, you would never know, she is retired considering her ongoing support of the virtual arts department and her continued presence at schools and divisions efforts. She has also been a member of the Tidewater Art Education Association since 1988 and has contributed to the Virginia Beach City Public School Visual Arts Program in countless capacities, as well as to the community at large for over 30 years. Congratulations, Ms. Slate, on your well-earned award as the Virginia Art Education Association Retired Art Teacher of the Year. Thank you for being a true example of an amazing educator.
Roundy now to recognitions this evening is Jessica Fun-Feeen-Hazen, who has been named as this year's Virginia Art Education Association Secondary Art Educator of the Year. Currently, she works at Cox High School, where she's been the lead art teacher since 2016, and the Fine Arts Department Chair since 2018. Additionally, she has been the sponsor for the National Art Honor Society at Cox High School since 2013. Jessica is also frequently and lovingly referred to as Mrs. V., or better yet, Mrs. Fun, by many students and staff, and that isn't just because of her last name, but also because her classes are so fun, creative, and innovative. For example, her students have worked with St. Mary's Home for disabled children to host an art workshop and fundraising gala. Each year, they take part in the Memory Project, creating portraits for children worldwide who are dealing with various hardships. The Brahaha Design Contest to Raise Awareness of Breast Cancer, and the Elie Wiesel Art Contest to Honor Victims of the Holocaust and Raise Awareness of Social Injustices. In addition, Mrs. Fun has coordinated field trips to Moca with her National Art Honor Society students and students in self-contained classes from Cox. Through opportunities like these, her students learn that art can be a powerful tool for change. The skills and knowledge she shares with her students are helping to create a generation of artists who value the power of their creation and the importance of connecting to their community and world. Mrs. Fun is an amazing and involved educator, and her dedication to art education and her community is commendable. Thank you for your continued hard work, and congratulations again on this outstanding award.
Madam Chair, this concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, adoption of the agenda, and this is a reminder that we will be continuing this afternoon's workshop, Item 17. That will be a wrap-up of the facility use application discussion, as well as our COVID update. So with that, are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, a motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Holtz. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the meeting minutes, from October 26th, 2021, the regular school board meeting, any modifications to these minutes? Right, hearing none, motion to approve, Mrs. Franklin, and a second, Ms. Owens. Please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes.
And abstention, please show a raised hand.
I'm abstaining because I was absent.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. So we have 10 ayes, and no nays, one abstention, the motion did pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to the public comments portion of our meeting. We will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K-12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the board are reminded to be respectful of speakers, so the school board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. Speakers are signed up to speak will be called up three at a time. We ask that you proceed to line up when your name is called. In-person student speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers participating through Zoom. After the student speakers, in-person speakers will be called, followed by speakers participating through Zoom or telephone. We ask that you begin speaking once your name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has three minutes to present, and will be given a 30-minute warning before time expires. We suggest you refer to the online time tracker to keep track of your time, and once your time has expired, that you kindly stop making remarks and allow the next speaker to queue to speak. If a speaker's not present when called to speak, or not online when called, the board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comments session. In accordance with newly amended bylaws, the board will suspend public comments at 8:00 to hold the information session of the meeting agenda, and return to public comments if needed prior to the consent and action sessions of the meeting. And as always, the board invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker of the evening?
Our first student speaker is Griffin Butt.
Thank you. I want to start tonight by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope that what I have to say is taken with deep consideration. My name is Griffin Butt, and I'm a senior at Cox High School. I've been playing lacrosse for 13 years now, going on 14 in a couple months. There's never a day where lacrosse isn't on my mind, or I'm doing something to better myself within the sport. Being fully immersed in the sport has made me thankful for everything it has given me in return. Winning championships and having last-second goals come second to the friendships I've built and the lessons I've learned. A great example can be seen through the Harlem Lacrosse Program, which provides opportunities for kids in Harlem that weren't, that weren't able to play lacrosse, but now are. With the development of this program, these kids are now able to play Division One Lacrosse, and there are a few, a few notable names that have received records as well. I am planning to play Division One Lacrosse at Princeton University next year with a preferred walk-on spot, on track with my admissions. While college is not the goal of making lacrosse a varsity sport for everyone, and not the reason for the vote, it is more about what the sport brings to the kids and what they're allowed to do. Playing, playing in college has always been a goal of mine, but been, but made difficult because of the lack of lacrosse in Virginia Beach and the lack of exposure at high schools, competing against kids in Maryland and New York where established programs have been made. With, with college lacrosse, there are great outreach programs, such as the Michael Bresch game, which has just happened between UNC and Ohio State, which was played in the remembrance of Michael Bresch, who died at the age of four. I hope that, my, my goal is to have lacrosse be voted as a varsity sport, so that we can get the necessary support from the schools and make memories, just like the Michael Bresch Memorial Game. Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our in-person speakers. The first speaker asked to be moved to Zoom, so we will begin with Thomas Conant, Vincent Smith, and then Richard Hannibal.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak about rights and responsibilities. On October 26th, at a rally outside this building, the parents and taxpayers in attendance invited several students who had signed up to speak that night in the school board meeting to address the rally, despite the fact that they oppose many of the issues we represent. We did that because the right to speak is enshrined in our Constitution, and is guaranteed even to those with whom we disagree. It's too bad that this board doesn't see it that way. You've walked all over the rights of those who oppose many of the policies you've enacted. First, the Health Department and you continue to keep us out of these chambers, despite the fact that the COVID case rate continues to decline. Then you voted to reduce the time we get to speak, and to move every student speaker to the head of the line ostensibly because they need to be in bed early because of school. Have you ever lived with a teenager? And what about the parents who must get up early to get them ready for school, or go to work to pay the taxes to support the schools? Do you think the students who have minimal experience in real life should have more to say in the policies that govern our schools than those who are responsible for the students and who support the school system with their taxes? Giving them priority tells me that you intend to listen to them more than to the real adults in the room. If that were not enough, at the last meeting, you voted to obstruct the right of citizens to peaceably assemble in the parking lot outside this building. Are you so afraid of our free speech that you want to curtail that speech and keep it away from your facilities? And who are you to overthrow these basic rights given by God and written in our laws? More important than rights, we all have responsibilities. These parents are responsible for their children's safety, health, education, and moral training. The school's responsibility is to give them the basic ability to read, to do entry-level math, and have a basic knowledge of history, civics, and science. And it is the taxpayer's responsibility to oversee the performance of our elected officials and hold you accountable for your responsibilities. Your totalitarian actions to limit that oversight by eliminating or curtailing our input is unconscionable. We intend to uphold our responsibilities by exercising our rights of free speech and peaceable assembly. That's why we're working on a recall petition as we speak. But make no mistake, if the recall doesn't work, there will be a
30 seconds.
...in 2022 and 2024, and just like the current administration was swept out of office last week, the heavy-handed members of the school board will be defeated at the polls. It's time for you to do what you're responsible for. Educate the children, stop the divisive indoctrination, and stop trying to take away constitutional rights. I strongly urge that you revisit and rescind the egregious ruling that permits or requires to peaceably assemble, then get back to doing your job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vincent Smith, then Rich Hannibal, then Dan Chang.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Vincent Smith. I'm here to comment on your reversion fund plan. Your legislative agenda that we just looked at on these screens a little bit ago is very heavy in discussing teacher and staff retention, but it's not addressed anywhere in your reversion plan. If it's important enough for you to ask the state to address it, why don't you want to handle it yourself? You want to go and use their money. So, but that's all our money, correct me, please. Yet you haven't addressed that. Your teachers are burnt out. They are covering multiple classes. They're being assigned, not asked, they are being assigned to teach during their scheduled planning sessions. So all this talk about how many planning sessions they have is a load of baloney, because they're being told to go teach a class during that period. So they're not getting their planning time, they're having to do it at home. Is that in line with their contract? You might want to ask your attorney back here. Can you do that legally? Because you are, right now. They're being required to switch from Schoology to Canvas mid-year for the state's benefit, not for your students' benefit. Am I correct? They're being stressed to the point of hospitalization, and that is not an exaggeration. Yet you have not addressed these issues with these reversion funds at all. $7 million for school buses. You don't have anyone to drive them. Who's going to drive them? You, you have admitted, you've even put it in your legislative agenda, that you need the state to help you find drivers, right? But you want to buy new buses that you don't have anyone to put in the driver's seat. Is it not important enough to you? But you want to use someone else's money to fix your problems first, because you want to use your money to buy switches for your internet? You want to buy shiny new buses? You want to paint some schools? I get it, those things need to be done. I'm completely aware of what this guy operates under. I do as well. But I think you need to take a good, hard look at what's important to you. Unfunded mandates, you addressed that in your legislative agenda as well. Told you a couple weeks ago, you have an unfunded mandate where the state is requiring you to allow transgender students to use the bathroom of their choice. Fine. But address it with your reversion funds.
30 seconds.
Remodel those bathrooms to ensure that all students have privacy that they deserve. You can do that with that money. You also haven't addressed the discipline issues in the schools. You should be using some of this money to create a disciplinary officer position in every middle and high school that you have. Discipline in your schools is out of control. And if you don't know that, you need to go talk to some of your teachers. Yet again, you have not addressed
And that is time.
...with these funds.
Our next speaker is Rich Hannibal, then Dan Chang, and then Paula Chang.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rich Hannibal. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, along with my wife and our daughter, who is a junior at the Global Culture and Languages Academy at Tallwood High School. I'd like to start by thanking you for the opportunity to speak this evening in this open forum. We are very vested in our daughter's education. Rarely, though, do we have the extent or feel the need to engage with the school board. That is until a few weeks ago, when the subject of eliminating certain books from our schools started to hit the news. This is something that I'm very passionate about, though let me be clear, I do not believe that all books belong in schools. Yes, I do believe there should be a process to determine what is age-appropriate, and absolutely, parents should have a say in how our kids are taught and how they read, which is why I reached out to the school board. I expressed my point of view and asked questions about the process that would be followed to determine the status of the books in questions. I appreciate the response that I received from several of you, and whether the outcome is one that I agree or disagree with, I respect the communication and transparency. I'd like to also call out Ms. Melnick and Ms. Hughes for the personal exchange and dialogue. However, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for stepping forward and serving our community as part of the school board. I believe that each of you invest your time not to further some agenda, but to better support our kids and schools. I appreciate your contributions, as I think many do, and the efforts of the entire school department for managing us through what has been one of the toughest times we have faced. While it is perfectly appropriate to question your policies and decisions, it concerns me that your intent and dedication is also being questioned. History may say that schools should have opened earlier, not closed at all, that mask mandates don't work, but make no mistakes. If you had gone in a different direction, the parents that you hear from now, you would have heard from a different group of parents, including me, because I happen to think that they do work. I'd like to say thank you to every principal, librarian, counselor, and most especially, thank you to every single teacher in this district who has gone above and beyond to keep our kids connected and engaged. In a normal environment, that is challenging. Teachers dig deep into their personal time and resources. During COVID, you have been nothing short of heroes. The truth is, I'm mad as hell. Our daughter has lost half her high school career to virtual, no sports, no dances, and no clubs. But I'm not mad at anybody in this room. I'm mad at a virus, a virus that we knew nothing about and we're still learning. Despite that, I believe this school
30 seconds.
...has made a remarkable difference with my daughter, and in listening to the, to the students who have come up and spoken in the last several weeks, you should be proud. I realize that politics can be personal and that passions can spill over, but the personal attacks, the misinformation, the social bullying, more than any word on any page in any book, this behavior sets a poor example for our kids. We're part of the same community, we can disagree, but I would like to say that we can do so with greater empathy and respect for each other. Thanks for the time.
And that is time.
Keep the faith.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, followed by Paula Chang, and then Kathleen Slindy.
Hi, Ms. Rye. My topic is Facilities Use Permit Update, Item 1D, regarding the parental rights transparency for citizens to exercise the First Amendment rights of freedom of speech and right to assembly and petition. You, you call it update to facilities use application, though I have never been able to find the application. I couldn't find the application last night online. The fact, this topic is intertwined with eight school board policy and regulations. Superintendent Spence? Hello, I'm right here, sir. I hope you're paying attention, because this is just not an application update, sir. These eight policies and regulations address community use of facilities, eligible organizations, application and approval for use, fees and liability insurance. Nowhere in these policies and regulations does it address citizens assembling in a public parking lot that we paid for. Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick, you have delegated to the superintendent the right to refuse in writing any application. Guess who the final appeal authority is? Right, the superintendent, and he is the final decision. He may deny the application for good cause. I don't know what good cause is. It might be something that bothered him that day, a parent pissed him off, so that's a good cause. Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick, please, you need to take this whole process back to the PRC. The election results of November 2nd was a monumental event for Virginia and etches into history your legacy. We now have a governor, lieutenant governor, and attorney general who care about the education of our children and parental rights. The governor-elect promised to ban critical race theory in schools. He will appoint a board of education and state superintendent who ensures CRT doesn't influence curriculum or teachers' professional development programs. He will offer more advanced math, direct the Department of Education to preserve advanced math classes, teach kids to think, not what to think, encourage critical thinking instead of critical race theory, remove politics from the classroom, and teach US history, good or bad. Also, after we started the recall petition, I looked at Attorney General Lacmire's campaign page, and this is what I found. The closure of schools over the last year has
30 seconds.
...been unconscionable. Over the past year, we have seen the Virginia public school system fail. We have also seen the most vulnerable student struggle in learning, this, with learning disabilities and IEP. He stated he will sue any school district on behalf of parents. Superintendent Spence, he is also investigating Loudoun County Public Schools and pornography in schools. Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick, and Superintendent Spence, the course is now set by parents, as it always should.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Kathleen Slindy, and then Teresa Salud.
Oh, no, I want that here, it's mine. I, that's mine. I would like that back. That was mine. No, I'm coming. That's now because it's what I want. It's mine. I'm not ready to speak yet, so please restart the clock. That is not right. I had to go get something that belonged to there that I said was mine.
Please proceed.
Ms., I, she just moved and she cut into my time
It just was reset, ma'am.
Okay, well, it didn't look at here. Okay, and since, it's interesting, Mrs. Riggs, I wasn't going to do this, but since you cut us off in the parking lot, I want you to know that these are the petitions just turned in tonight, all notarized. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize Agenda 14, Item 14A4, National School Psychology Week, which, because quite clearly, people need it here. Case in point, last meeting, not these children, but what's being taught to them. 20 pleasant, bright students came to speak. They spoke with us outside and mentioned that they think social issues, not things like STEM, science, technology, and engineering and math are important. When we discussed with them the need for the future, for the country, for economics, for themselves, they, they dismissed it, as great as they were. So I ask, what has happened to the minds of our children in our schools if the best and brightest don't really understand what it's going to take to compete in society and what is actually going on in the schools? Not surprising, though, when the school board vice chair considers the educational hill she'll die on not to be STEM or challenging math curriculum, but instead to be the racial hailing handbook, and that is why, Ms. Melnick, it is so appropriate that your political career seems to have ended last week on that hill. Dr. Spence plays also the mind-warping game, that critical race theory is not in our curriculum, though we all know, he says neuroscience proves that racism is inherent. Other leadership in our schools have that same view of racism, as in his Equity and Inclusion Committee, run by Dr. Parrott and the school board members, Ms. Owen and Felton, last year when they released a draft policy in 2020. This policy defines race as, and this is their draft, though, quote, "a social construct that artificially divides individuals into distinct groups based on characteristics, such as their physical appearance," basically their color of their skin, and says scientists agree that there are no biologic or genetic basis for racial categories, categories, though they don't offer proof for that. They also defined racism as prejudiced thoughts and discriminatory actions based on a difference in race or ethnicity, usually by white European descent groups against persons of color. That's vile stuff. This actually does, Dr. Spence, define neuroscience, unless you can show me where neuroscience proves that white people only are racist. Well, when you hear that stuff in your schools, I say, bring on the psychologist. The last need for psychologists, the Wednesdays off.
30 seconds.
Teachers are under anxiety, and so they need Wednesdays off, and I say to this, they, this must be because they have to administer inappropriate tests to students. Volunteers are denied access to the buildings or where. Teachers are, state, they are afraid to speak what they think, they're forced to teach things they don't like, CRT, SEL, ask students their gender preference, monitor mask usage, worry about vaccine to keep their jobs, all anxious because of the policies of this board and the policies of
And that is time.
All anxious because of the policies of this board and the policies of this superintendent, you have failed.
Our next speaker is Kathleen. And that speaker is Kathleen Slindy, Teresa Salud, and then Annie Palumbo.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Slindy. I serve as the president of Virginia Beach Education Association. I want to thank you for listening for when employees requested more planning time. Hopefully, the Wednesday early release dates will provide that. Tonight, I want to speak to you about the budget and some current needs that might help get and keep our schools fully staffed. First, of course, compensation is always a top concern for employees. School employees' salaries and wages in Virginia are simply not competitive with others in the country. ABC News reported in August 2021 that when comparing teacher wages to other occupations requiring comparable education, Virginia ranks 50th in the country, only beating Washington DC. This is important since we have a shortage of qualified teachers across the nation. Even those who would normally continue to teach when they could possibly retire are now leaving the profession. School counselors, nurses, psychologists, administrators, and other professionals like speech and occupational therapists are leaving along with teachers. We are also in need of support personnel. Our teaching assistants, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria, and maintenance staff are all looking to see where they can earn, go and earn a better living. These employees have choices, and those districts that are offering a better living will get them. But there are other factors in keeping our employees here. Virginia Beach is a very attractive place to live and raise a family, so employees want to be able to make it work here. One way to do that is involve those who do the work in the decision-making process. What are the big things that would help keep and attract and keep employees here? No one knows the answers to that better than your employees. Having a seat at the decision-making table makes a difference. A quick list of current issues affecting employees and our list of asks for tonight are these. One, adjust the pacing. The pace of instruction is too fast. Students' needs are too great to move at the normal pace. Allow some more flexibility here, as you have done in the past. Two, find a way to lower the too-high class loads and caseloads. They are unsustainable. Being able to provide the quality of instruction and care for their students is important to employees for their sense of well-being and for job satisfaction. Three, provide consistent and clear communication across the district that values and respects all employees. This is especially important in the area of discipline referrals and additional requirements, trainings, and duties. And number four, involve the stakeholders in the decision-making before implementing changes. Classroom and school workers know the impact it will have on the daily schedule and actually how it plays out in the school day. These are our asks to you at this time. Adjust the pacing. Find a way to lower the class and caseloads and the flexible spending or scheduling model. Seems like it might be a start to do that. Work to have consistent, clear communication. Involve the stakeholders in the decision-making before implementation. No one who has put in their effort, time, money, and heart into working with students wants to have to leave this district. Let's find a way to keep them here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Salud, then Annie Palumbo, then Tara Chang.
Welcome.
Hello. You have been weighed on the scales and found not good enough, especially Kimberly Melnick, who lost to Glenn Davis in the 84th District House of Delegate race. Parents have unionized against the liberal indoctrination of CRT, SEL, culturally responsive theory, equity, divisive, race theory, or any other synonym or wordplay some school members want to use to throw up the parents. Parents voted for high-class education to return to Virginia by voting for Yonkin, Winsome, Mirares, and flipping the House of Delegates. A resounding no has been clearly stated by the vast majority of the Virginia citizens that sexually illicit content will be removed, or at least garner parental consent from the English curriculum and school libraries. Believe it or not, some parents would like to keep their children innocent for as long as possible. I'm not ignorant to the ugly behaviors that are prolific in life, such as bullying, rape, molestation, human sex trafficking, gang violence. Parents have the right to determine when their child is exposed to such topics. We are not helicopter parents either. I know that my child and every young child is going to be exposed to bullying fairly early on. I know some children don't get the love and attention they need at home for them to feel confident around their peers. So they take aggressions out on weaker and non-confrontational peers. This saddens me. I have experienced bullying or intimidation when I was young and as an adult. I have experienced it here recently, in this room, by Ry and Melnick. The disrespect from Anderson, Holtz, Owens, Felton, and Riggs, walking off their race platform, where they believe they are all smarter than the rest of the community. In the words of President Ronald Reagan, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same." Or, "One day, we will spend our sunset years telling children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free." This speech was delivered while the country was grappling with the threat of communism and other foreign adversaries, all while civil rights and other domestic issues were taking center stage at home.
Thirty seconds.
Years later, we haven't learned, we have been complacent. This is going to change, because I'm inspired to be vigilant in the community. So that freedom is never eradicated on my watch. My child will also learn this and pass it down. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Palumbo, then Tara Chang, then Kathleen Brown.
Welcome.
Good evening. Trenes, did you take that sign from Mrs. Chang? Get off your phone.
Please, please, please proceed and engage.
She just took a sign. That's inappropriate. Anyway, I'm watching. If you turn that camera off of me again, from books that are in our libraries, we're watching it. You're in big trouble. Don't do it. These books are in our libraries, and guess what? I got another one today. So anyway, Dottie, I just saw you taking pictures of speakers. You're a bully, Trenes, you're a bully, for taking a sign. And you called all the moms fighting for the books that are in our schools Karens. You think it's funny? It's not funny. There's nothing funny about what you're doing to our kids, nothing! I'm sick of it. You get on social media at night and bully all these parents. We're over it.
Ms. Palumbo, kindly keep your voice down.
Kindly keep my voice down while she bullies us. Oh, so you do it with a smile and do things behind the scenes. I'm mad. I'm a mom, and I have every reason to be mad. No wonder we won the election. No wonder Tuesday was a bloodbath, as they said. We've had enough, and I thank the parents in Virginia. There were lines at the polls to sign the recall petition, lines. People said, "We've heard about this. Where do we sign?" You know, we have a new governor, but I'm like, "We're still gonna fight the masks." That's my passion. Why? The numbers are way down. Why are the kids in masks? I saw two teens this weekend. They were afraid to take their masks off outside of school because their whole faces, they have porcelain skin, they were broken out in acne. You all leave, you're all gonna leave here tonight and take your masks off, aren't you? You are. I know you are. There's no reason. I want to know why, with all the money you guys got for CARES, to purify, there's all these air purification systems in the schools, and why are the kids still wearing masks? You spent probably millions of dollars on putting air purification systems in our schools. Our kids are still not wearing masks. So in case the public does not know, we have over $100 million left of the CARES money. Give that money back to the people, the taxpayers. Give it back. Parents were very inconvenienced when you guys shut schools down for what, a year? I don't even remember.
Thirty seconds.
Anyway, we're not gonna shut up. You can't muzzle us like you can muzzle the kids. And this parking lot thing, we're not gonna stop. We're just gaining traction. And you know what? I have every reason to raise my voice. I try to be nice to you guys, but you know what? When I see you act like a child and take her sign, you are horrible. You're horrible. You're all getting recalled. We've gotta stack this big, and it's gonna get bigger, and you're gonna be gone, because elections have consequences.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Tara Chang, then Kathleen Brown, then Amber Thompson.
While we respect what strength each group brings to our society, perhaps it is time to teach what unifies us. Who best to highlight what unifies us but our Lieutenant Governor-elect, first black Lieutenant Governor Winsome Seals?
Fight us, and we must not let that happen. They would like us to believe we are back in 1963 when my father came. We can live where we want, we can eat where we want, we own the water fountains. We have had a black president elected not once, but twice, and here I am, living proof. Because education lifted my father out of poverty, education lifted me out of poverty. Education will lift us all out of poverty, because we must have marketable skills so that our children can not just survive, but they will thrive, and they will create generational wealth. That's what this is about.
And so I want to say to all the young, black, Asian, Hispanic, Muslim, and white little girls in a world full of Kamala Harris's, be Winsome Seals. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Brown, Amber Thompson, and then Victoria Cantrell.
Welcome. All right. So most of you guys are looking at me. Ms. Owens, I'm over here. You guys, I would have spent my time writing in my speech, but instead I made bullet points, because every time I get up here, none of you guys actually look at me, so I'm glad to see that. All of you, except for Mrs. Owens, still are looking at me. Thank you, Mr. Spence. I'm glad you're not writing tonight. I want to let everybody know, especially you, Ms. Riggs, since you were scrolling through your emails, your text messages, while I'm sitting six feet away from you behind you last meeting. This is what Ms. Riggs thinks of the parents speaking at meetings. If I can get it to play.
I might be drunk by then, but whatever.
So I would have thought that you would want to redeem yourself, but I guess you didn't. Ms. Ry, your job is to keep the school board in order in this meeting. I would like you to go forward and do that, please. And I know I have lots to cover and only a little bit of time. I want to say that this facility use permit, I believe it's a First Amendment rights infringement. I'm not sure that you have jurisdiction. I think that there is an intent to lessen the amount of dissent in the school board, and I have a big problem with that, a big problem. So moving on. If I were city council, I would want to legally distance myself from you guys as well. There's a lot of chatter online about this book. Dottie, you love this book, don't you? I find it really interesting, because it's hard to follow, and it does include sexual acts. And I actually have more than one college degree, and I had a great deal of trouble following it. It is not appropriate, not appropriate, for 12th graders. I have done college courses. This type of literature was never in my college courses. And also, it uses the N-word, in as in Nancy, at least five times before I stopped counting. If you guys don't have a problem with the N-word, I don't know why on earth you guys are giving us so much trouble. And moving on, and I know I'm jumping all over, but there's a lot to talk about, only a little bit of time. I think that you all owe it to the parents, the citizens, as far as House Bill 257 is concerned, which allows you all to not report assault or sexual assault, especially after you passed what's known as the transgender policy, to what exactly your plans are when there is a sexual assault or assault, and as you're planning to report it. And I do not have time to talk about the budget resolution, but I emailed you all. I have gotten a reply from one of you. Since you're voting on it tonight, I would like to think that you guys read your emails, but I'm not 100% sure. Anyway, you all need to resign if you're not interested in dissent, and that's what I have to say.
And that is time.
And you need to fire Spence.
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, Victoria Cantrell, and Leslie McGuire.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm here tonight to discuss a couple of issues, but most importantly, would like to start with board member decorum. I've complained and addressed you all in meetings multiple times how unprofessional a number of board members' actions are, specifically on social media. You hold us to these standards that you do not hold your own board to. With a snap of your finger, you can have parents removed for speaking off-topic. Yet you stand by board members such as Dottie Holtz, who slanders parents and constituents daily. You stand by your own superintendent, who is unlawful and speaks out of line to city council, so it's no wonder the same behavior is allowed time and time again. Most recently, Ms. Holtz has likened parents to Karens, claiming we are intentionally deaf, blind, and crazy. When complaints are brought forward to her, rather than having an open mind, she utilizes personal attacks, such as a constituent who had a failed run for office previously. This was brought forward to your governance committee, which coincidentally is run by you, Mrs. Ry, so did my complaint really ever have a fair shot? The perception here is bad. You've recently limited our time to speak, shut us out of meetings, and now are pulling the plug on the peaceful gatherings in the parking lot before. Again, you already pushed us outside, and now we can't even stand together outside, so what is next? On top of that, members like Dottie Holtz continuously laugh in our faces, claiming our efforts to push back on any of this are worthless and merely a nice nighttime story to tell our great-grandkids. The disrespectful analogies by Ms. Holtz, as well as egging on others to partake in her elementary dialogue, are appalling. I'm honestly shocked that this woman is in charge of making decisions for my five-year-old. I would never want that to be the example my child looks up to. Until you hold this board to the same standards you hold us to, or even the code of ethical and professional conduct you all agreed to, that perception will not change. Your beliefs may represent the majority of the board, but you do not represent the majority of us. I hope last week's election was a stark reminder that we, parents, do not agree with your decisions. The majority of us that come to speak and send emails to you voice opposition, yet time and time again, you felt for your gain instead. Please use this time to reflect on the current trajectory of the school board and the behavior you continue to stand by and do nothing about, to include Dr. Spence. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the issue of mask mandates in schools. I was promised mask breaks, among other things, and my child comes home daily complaining about the trouble he has breathing in it. He is forced to wear it in PE while exercising and/or dancing. I was told by the administration that when six feet apart and doing physical activity, they would be able to take them off. That has not been the case. In closing, Dottie, I understand that you have stated you don't plan to run for reelection, therefore you're able to show your true colors to us parents. I just hope that with, excuse me, with that, you instead remember that if you can be anything, to be kind. After all, that is the quote you publicly came to live by. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Victoria Cantrell, Leslie McGuire, and then Amy Saleras.
Welcome.
Good evening. Today, I am going to discuss my concerns on the banning of books. I believe the books are inappropriate for minors, and especially within a school setting. These books contain inappropriate sexually explicit contexts. Some of the books even contain pornographic images. I think most parents should be concerned, and members of this board should be concerned, in that they would allow any distribution of pornography in our schools. I think most would agree that it is, it does not matter whether it is two men, two women, or a man and a woman. All pornography should not be in our schools, and it should be removed immediately. School is not the place to explore sexual content. One book I really found disturbing was the book The Bluest Eye. I won't even go on to quote the passage in this book, as it was already deemed too inappropriate for a school board meeting. But it was not considered, but it was still considered appropriate for our schoolchildren to read. The passage was about a father raping his daughter in very explicit and disgusting detail. I was even more horrified to find out that this book was an assigned reader for a high school English class. I voiced my concerns along with others in a Facebook group, where Ms. Holtz admits to buying all three of the books mentioned in the banning. She also goes on to say that she read the offensive passages in their full context. I go to ask Ms. Holtz, "So you read these books, were fully aware of the content, and you find it acceptable in our schools? What grade levels have access to this book and others mentioned?" Her reply, and I quote, was, "I never read the books until a bunch of Karens asked for them to be banned. I bought all three of the titles to see why they won literary prizes. Clearly, you did not read anything except for a few passages that someone else quoted. It does not glorify, pead, oppos- It is not glorified, peed, oppos- quite the opposite, end quote. I find it ridiculous that Ms. Holtz considers concerned parents Karens, especially as a member of this board. That is supposed to uphold professionalism and con- and conduct themselves in a professional manner on all public communication.
30 seconds.
Would see fit to insult and degrade concerned parents of the school district. I would like to raise one main concern I have with this book. This, this book within our schools is that you consider the children within your walls that have experienced sexual trauma. This could seriously cause them re-traumatization. I hope you do consider those students within your walls would finding this content acceptable. This book should be-
And that is time. Our next speaker is Leslie McGuire, Amy Saleras, and then Bobby Malati.
Welcome.
Hey, thanks. My name's Leslie and I have a letter that my nine-year-old, she's in elementary school. She spoke it and I wrote it and I just want to read it and let it speak for itself. It says, "Dear school board, I would like to suggest that school should be more than just learning, but almost like a playground. Why I'm saying this is because in my classroom, I've noticed that more than one student has fallen asleep, so it's not just one. And to me, that is not the students' fault that are falling asleep, it is the way that the teachers are teaching. How I would like to make this different is by letting the students interact with whatever the teacher is teaching, that includes crafts, cahoots, and nearpods. What I'm saying is let school be more interesting, so students will want to come back and not be mad that they have to go back to school. And also letting the students talk and share whatever they want to say, even if it is off topic. And also, what I've noticed is that the teacher isn't interacting with the students as much. So I would like for me and other students as well to be able to have fun with the teacher, not just with the students. For example, having recess to play with the teacher as well. So basically, what I'm saying is school should be more fun and exciting for kids and not just sitting down listening to a teacher. Thank you."
Our next speaker is Amy Saleras, Bobby Malati, and John Beatty.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I want to first suggest you bring back the designations of valedictorian, salutatorian, and class rankings to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. At a time when you should be empowering our children with knowledge, confidence, and an education, you're instead training our children to be victims and dependent. You're taking away the ability of all children to advance at their own level, whether it be gifted, or average, or remedial, in your pursuit for equity. Your focus on taking away parental rights is clear in the closing of the seats in these board meetings, making us continue to wear the mask regardless of the actual science and studies, cutting back our time to speech, making it difficult for us to meet in the public parking lot, which our tax dollars support, and the numerous surveys given to our children. For those of you who haven't read the surveys, please listen to some of the questions given to our students in K through 12 schools. Do you, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? Some people describe themselves as transgender when their sex at birth does not match the way they think or feel about their gender. How do you describe yourself? Have you been physically forced to have sexual intercourse when you did not want to? During the past 12 months, how many times did anyone force you to do sexual things you did not want to do? During your life, how often has there been an adult in your household who tried hard to make sure your basic needs were met? Have you lived with someone who was depressed, mentally ill, or suicidal? During the past 30 days, how often was your mental health not good? During the past 12 months, how many times did someone you were dating or going out with force you to do sexual things you did not want to do? During the past 12 months, how many times did someone you were dating physically hurt you on purpose? Has an adult or a person at least five years older than you ever made you do sexual things you did not want to do? During your life, has a parent or other adult in your home sworn at you, insulted you, put you down, hit, beat, kicked, physically hurt you, slapped, hit, kicked, punched, or beat each other up? During the past 12 months, how many times did you do something to purposely hurt yourself without wanting to die, such as cutting or burning yourself on purpose? During the past 12 months, have you been tested for a sexually transmitted disease-
30 seconds.
Other than HIV, such as chlamydia or gonorrhea? Have you ever con- seriously considered attempting suicide? If you did, what was your plan? Please tell me where these questions fit in a public school classroom lesson. These topics are sensitive. Parents should determine when our children are exposed to these things. Parents, do not let anyone tell you CRT is not in Virginia schools. It is, and these questions are these SEL, which is the start of the CRT. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bobby Malati, then John Beatty, and Aiden, Aiden Jackson.
Welcome.
Good evening, especially to those people who, uh, my former colleagues. I wanted to give you a Reader's Digest version of my experience at the polls last Tuesday. I was passing out literature for a candidate for General Assembly. Others were doing the same thing for their candidates. It was still dark. A woman arrived and began to set up a table. She planted a sign which named some of you personally. On the table were several clipboards. Each of the school board- Each of the school board members that they were looking to recall, uh, had their own clipboard. Initially, there was little interest. However, as dark turned into light, folks began inquiring as to what this was. As the morning progressed, it was interesting to observe who was lining up to sign the petitions. It wasn't just parents, although they were certainly well-represented. The bulk of the signatories were older, perhaps grandparents. Many had come from other precincts where the petitions were not available. They took the extra time to make sure that their voices were heard. No one was loud or obnoxious, but all appeared determined. It was as though these seniors in particular viewed themselves as perhaps the last line of defense between the changes that they viewed as detrimental and what they believed they had defended all their lives. The two gals at the table had a difficult time keeping up with the numbers of folks waiting to sign. When I left at 11 o'clock, I ventured to say that at least 100 people had signed each one of these petitions. These people were angry. It was obvious to me that they felt ignored. They felt marginalized, exasperated. As someone who has sat where you are sitting, I have to believe that the citizens are not satisfied with the representation that they are getting from this board. They don't believe that they are being heard and that their concerns are addressed. They are speaking to you in the only way they know how, and it's by raising the decibel level, hoping that that will prompt you to pay attention. They are using unconventional words and sign language out of desperation. Please look past the unconventional-
30 seconds.
And hear what they are saying. They have far more at stake than anyone else, the welfare of their children. They may not always be right, but they always care. We are all experiencing a huge paradigm shift. Change has become normal and we're uncomfortable with that. We need, even though it's not in your job description, we need you to help navigate the choppy waters that cause these changes. You're our only court of appeals. Thank you.
And that is time. Our next speaker is John Beatty, Aiden, Aiden Jackson, and Absalom O'Neill.
Alright, good evening. As you all know, there was an election last Tuesday and in Virginia Beach, the numbers swang like 12 points from one side to the other. The reason that happened is because of this school board here in Virginia Beach. Just reflect, do any of you think you would have been reelected last week? And as you, like, are skeptical about that, you might think, well, maybe the parents don't understand, or maybe the voters don't know the time and the effort and the work and the amount of stuff that you guys do. But you're wrong. This group of parents, this group of voters, we know more about the inner workings of the school board than we ever have before because of what's gone on and what's going on. There are more people tuning in, there's more people reading the minutes, there's more people engaged in the issues. We are very aware of what all has been gone on to our kids for the last two years. The closures, the masking of the kids, virtual learning day, virtual learning year, CRT, SEL, no higher math, canceling all the kids' events, no valedictorians, half-days count as full-days, vaccines for kids or for if they want to be athletes, the parents are terrorists. All across the board, time after time after time, you guys have been wrong. And what it has resulted in, 10,000 students have left the Virginia Beach system. The test scores are horrid. Now, can't get enough teachers to teach in the system, or they can't do their full, they're holding all the job. So what we're left is, like, how do we come out of this? This group, all of you, you do not have the backing of the students. You don't have our support. You don't have, uh, our confidence that you're able to go forward and do better. So I think what most people think right now is we need to move on from this chapter of the Virginia Beach School Board and this chapter of Virginia Beach Schools. Now, nobody's perfect. We all have flaws. But when your flaws harm this institution, it is time to have the grace to go.
Our next speaker is Aiden Jackson, Absalom O'Neill, Tim Butt.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, esteemed school board members and concerned parents and residents of Virginia Beach, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. I do not plan to take up too much of your time, but I am very troubled, to say the least, about recent discussions regarding teaching history in our classrooms and quote-unquote, critical race theory, whatever the heck that is. I'm troubled, to say the least, at how what was once a fringe white nationalist talking point has now become the Republican Party's key issue to win back suburban voters. If learning about the history of racism accurately makes me a hater of all things American, call me a communist. It's better than being a racist. I'm troubled to say, um, that the same people who get their news from Fox News and Facebook want to have a say in public education? No, thank you. The idea that white children are being taught to hate themselves, the idea that somehow children are being indoctrinated in the classroom, I mean, do you realize how ridiculous some of you people sound? The only radical indoctrination of our kids is coming from far-right activists who want children to only be exposed to their whitewashed version of history where America was once great. But as we've become more open and tolerant and progressive, our greatness has somehow faded away. A lot of white people are scared that, that learning about or even acknowledging the existence of systematic racism will somehow implicate them as racist. But it's the opposite, to deny its existence is what implicates you as a racist. The same group of people who fought so hard against bringing down Confederate monuments for fear of erasing our history are now trying to erase history lessons in school because they are scared it will make them look bad or something. Let me make this clear. To deny or to block out key parts of our history because you are scared of how it will influence public opinion if they knew the truth, then you are no better than the book burners of Nazi Germany. School board members, do not bow into this trumped-up racially motivated dog whistle or bow down to this mob. They are just scared of a rapidly changing and diversifying country that is finally waking up. They are scared that their old and outdated ways of life are under attack, because they are. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Absalom O'Neill, then Tim Butt, then Janelle Mans.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I spoke here a while back before Corona hit. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of lacrosse as a high school sport. Um, I call myself a Swiss Army knife when it comes to being a speaker because I am a teacher, a coach, a parent, and a player at 52 years old, okay? I've been teaching at Kempsville High School for 22 years and I've been in Virginia Beach schools for 27 years. Uh, for all those 27 years, I wished for this to happen. The reason being because lacrosse is so much more than just a sport. It's called the medicine game for a reason. And, um, from a personal standpoint, it, it saved me when I was allowed, uh, when I was finally able to make lacrosse a possible sport at Kempsville High School. Uh, lacrosse is a sport where you don't have to be the biggest to be good at the sport, myself, for example, um, to consider. And the kind of people that I brought in were people that had never played a, a, an organized sport before in their life. Uh, my first year that I, I coached, I had a German exchange student. The following year, I had an exchange student from Spain. Ocean Lakes has an exchange student from Spain this year, okay? Um, we get, we get some of the fringe kids, the kids that don't quite, haven't been going through the same sport year after year after year, and they can pick up a new sport, okay? It's been nice that we've been able to give it to them, but we've also had to scrounge, um, an offer up and get donations from people so that we can give the kids equipment to play with, okay? I personally shelled out my own money and I got my sister and my father to sponsor, um, players so that they could play, okay? So it makes sense to make this sport available for boys and girls in Virginia Beach so that they can, you ask why another sport? Like I mentioned before, lacrosse is different than that, okay? It's much more than just a sport, it's also a culture. Making it a high school sport just makes it make sense so that I and other people in the Virginia Beach school system can offer it in a more broad range to people of all backgrounds to experience the sport that I love to this day. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Butt, then Janelle Mans, and Troy Jones.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairperson Wright, Vice Chair Melnick, and other board members. My name is Tim Butt. I'm the president of the Cox Boys Lacrosse Club. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening to provide my concise comments on lacrosse in Virginia Beach High Schools. Our family's been associated with lacrosse for over 16 years and it's been a wonderful ride. The wins, the losses, the experiences we've had as a family, making new friends, has been amazing. Unfortunately, this opportunity is not available to everyone, but could be available to more families through tonight's actions. I could stand here and say establishing lacrosse as a VHSL sport in our community would validate its presence with college coaches who recruit players in our area. In time, yes, that would be, that would occur. But that statement overlooks the greater opportunity we have. This evening is about a positive initiative for every Virginia Beach student, which is in line with No One Left Behind. And we are grateful, so grateful, you have taken a serious consideration for this initiative. Through sports teams, I believe we would all agree, we've seen the development of our children not only as athletes, but also as individuals. Yes, this currently occurs for lacrosse in today's club setting, where individuals grow through participation in civic-based community service events. Lacrosse players have a passion for giving back to the community, which is derived, I think, from the sports humbles beginning and the individuals who play the sport. Think of the large impact to the student body of our high schools as lacrosse transitions to VHSL. Students will see firsthand the impact these players are making in their communities, the excitement that they generate as they grow as leaders and individuals. And the greater student body will also want to become involved. Establishing lacrosse as a VHSL sport carries great potential to positively impact the student body of our schools. Tonight's decision is not only the first step-
30 seconds.
-in growing the game, but also means to engage the student body of our high schools, in turn paving the way for future community growth with you, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, setting the example for all of Hampton Roads. Thank you for your time and your support.
Our next speaker is Janelle Mans, then Troy Jones, then Joseph Fitzgerald.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not much of a public speaker, but this is something that really touches me and I want to highlight. And I know it's a controversial book, but I want you to hear me out. I do not feel that the book The Bluest Eye is suitable to be used as curriculum reading material for children under the age of 18, and I am asking for its immediate suspension until further review based on the following. The book contains adult themes such as racism, hard profane language, graphic persistent violence and abuse, graphic sexual violence, to include rape, incest, and child molestation narratives. I also would like to add the important note that this book has embedded- I also would like to add the important note that this book has embedded an incest narrative, which means when a child reads this book, it is not only from the third person, it is from the first person. So a statement such as "she has been raped" turns into "I have been raped." I will preface with some statistics from rain.org, known as Rape Abuse and Incest National Network. By the age of 18, 1 in 4 women have been the victim of rape, incest, molestation, sexual abuse, assault, and unwanted sexual contact. In a classroom of 32 students, that is 25% of the classroom if it is equally comprised of males and females. Of those survivors, 48% of the crimes happened at home and 7% were at school. 34% of victims are under the age of 12, with 66% of victims being between the age of 12 to 17, within the age range to be reading this book based on a reading exile, and less removed from incidents. Fact: the book's character, Pacola Bree Love, is raped in her home. There are children like Pacola. This is not just fiction. What permits you, in the name of literary studies, to actively engage crime-exposed children? How are you identifying these children? Do you notify parents? How do you protect these children specifically? Are teachers trained to observe and/or counsel these children's reactions or experiences to perhaps some of these children's first exposure to sexually violent and graphic passages, but moreover, to children who have already experienced these traumas? Given the statistics and the potential negative emotional states
Thirty seconds.
... in these children, do you feel that you have adequate counseling staff to support any damage inflicted on these children by exposing them to this abhorrent content, a repeat secondary trauma? If not, then it's like picking a scab, and they are going to bleed out if you are not prepared to support them. So you want to keep the book? Be prepared to keep the book and the fallout from keeping the book. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Troy Jones, then Joseph Fitzgerald. Speaker number 24 has not checked in, and then will be Virginia Wassenberg.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Troy. I was concerned about the mask because it affects the children greatly. There was a worker that worked in confined spaces and he had a meter. He put it in front of his mouth without the mask, and no, no, no problems. Put the mask on, put the hose behind the mask, and within a few seconds, the meter went off. Now, we have those kind of meters that work bigger than the handheld ones, but when that alarm goes off, it's a piercing alarm, and that means you're supposed to get out. Or if the mask is on, you want to take it off because it's poisoning the kids. It gets bacteria in the mask, and, you know, I worry about the kids, and I don't know how y'all can sit there. You know, Jesus is Lord and King. He's going to come and judge all of us one day, and people in positions of power, we're all going to be judged. I don't know how you can sit there and smile. These are children, and the Bible speaks of the children. I think I said last time, Luke 17:2, "Better for him than a millstone were hanging about his neck, and he cast him to sea; then he should offend one of these little ones." The children are important to him. They should be important to you. There should be something in you. I don't know. The mandates, if you go look for the parents, mandates, the mask mandates, the schools do because they're paid. They get paid. You're forcing the children to wear masks. This is America. We should have a choice whether to wear a mask or not wear a mask, to be vaccinated, not to be vaccinated. It amazes me. We're all going to be judged one day. Truth sounds like hate to those who hate truth. Why? Why do you continue? You have all the voices around here, the unsatisfactions of the parents. The kids, it's about the kids. You should care about the kids. If you're mad at the parents, think about the kids and know that Jesus is going to judge every one of us one day. It's sad the state of this country. It is sad.
Thirty seconds.
You sit in a place of leadership. Be leaders and do what's right. Do what's right for the children. If not for yourselves, think of the children. Not about you, it's about the children. They're very important. It's not funny. If you have a MD in your name, PhD, if you don't have no common sense, it's no good. No good. Think of the children.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Fitzgerald, then Virginia Wassenberg, and Daphne Stagg.
Welcome.
Hello. I came today to fulfill my civic duty and try to do my best to hold you accountable to the job I unfortunately elected some of you to do. I'm just a hard-working floor guy that gets to work with a lot of houses and a lot, interact with a lot of homeowners, as well as getting to work with a lot of other hard-working guys and gals in the construction industry. And I can tell you that many of these people are fed up with what's going on in our schools, and although not a lot of them are here to speak their mind, they definitely showed up last Tuesday at the polls. Not only did they do, did they make it clear which direction we want our schools and our society to turn towards, they also signed a lot of those recall petitions. The people of Virginia Beach have spoken, they do not want CRT in our schools or pornography in our libraries. We need to return to morals and love being taught in our schools and not confusing our children with divisive conversations and confusing rhetoric of pronouns. We are products of our environment, especially children. If we're constantly talking about race, that's what they think about. If we think, we talk about sex all day, that's what they think about. Then you guys sent out this survey, leading questions, drugs, sex, race. I can hear all the kids now talking in my head, laughing and bragging to their friends about all their answers. All for what? To justify what your policies and to check on their demographic, which ones they're working on? After seeing this, it almost felt like you guys doubled down. Instead of reading the temp of the state and grabbing the board and trying to catch up on the red wave, instead you're going to stand behind your divisive, immoral practices, even after everyone said, "No, thanks." Kind of reminds me when I was a kid, playing my brother in Mario Kart on split screen. This one time, I was thinking I was winning the whole time, only to find out I was staring at the wrong screen. I'd been slamming into wall after wall. The people have woken it up, and they see through your double dips and your slippery tricks. We're here to stand firm and stand up for what is right in God's eyes. This country was established in God we trust, and I believe it's going to stay that way. We will not relent until the Board majority listens to the constituents, turns from its divisive practices, stops succumbing to the BDOE and legislation handed down from Richmond. We are watching the money in the present and the past. Dr. 404 over there can't hide everything. This time, it is time to take reflect and heed the warning calls and do what's right. I believe many of you have been doing what you thought was right, just been misled. Let's get back to working together with the parents, building trust through transparency, and not making more rules and regulations putting divide between us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Virginia Wassenberg, and then Daphne Stagg.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to speak on the reversion funds, and I just have a lot of figures in front of me, a lot of papers with that. But before I speak on that, Ms. Owens, I wanted to say thank you for your comments in the workshop concerning the facilities use. I really appreciate that a lot. So let's start with what the school operating fund is, or at least what was approved, and that was $828.8 million was approved by the city council for the school board proposed operating, well, it's operating fund right now. So looking at this resolution, I wanted to know why these things were needed. So someone said, "Here's the school's operating budget, here's the school's CIP budget, look at it and figure it out." Because nobody up here has told me why these things are needed out of these reversion funds. So I opened the operating budget, and I opened the CIP budget, and I found most of them right here. These are the CIPs at least. And then I found the operating budget, which is here, okay? So first of all, the first thing on the list, $11 million for the school reserve special revenue fund? Well, the city council gave you $3.9 million. They actually reduced your school reserve special revenue fund in the, in, back in May. So I'm not really sure the city council is going to give you 11 million right now, okay? So the next thing that is on the list is $34.4 million to be re-appropriated to the CIP fund. And going, I don't know if you've looked at the CIPs that are listed here, but I have. And then looking at them, I see that in the revenues and replacements, you budgeted in FY, and I'm going to say what you budgeted in FY '21, okay? You budgeted 1.5 million, you're asking for 3.5 million more, okay? In the HVAC, you budgeted 2, you budgeted 2.9 million, I'm sorry, you budgeted 7.2 million, you're asking for 2.9 million more. In the various ones for renovations, you budgeted 2.1 million, you're asking for 6.2 million more.
Thirty seconds.
All right? I could go on on this, but the bottom line here for me is that you budgeted money for these things, all right? Out of the 8.8, 828.8 million dollars, but you didn't use all of that, and I want to know why. Why didn't you use it? Why do you need it now? Explain that to me. Explain that to the public, because until we know that, can't get behind it.
And that is time.
Sorry, just can't get behind it.
Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg. Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg. Okay, Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker. We will move on to our online speakers. First speaker is Jerome Bell. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for having me. That was actually going to be nice tonight, just read something from Frederick Bastiat the Law, but many people may not even understand that. But while listening and watching these festivities tonight, which they were because most of you think it's funny and most of you don't, really don't take it serious because you're going to do what you're going to do anyway, we understand this, and that's why we have those recall petitions. But, but to the leader, you know, I really want to ask you, when you asked that lady to, Ms. Palumbo, to lower her voice, or, I mean, really, who the hell do you think you are? Really? These people are adults, okay? These people are not children, and you're trying to treat them like children. And, and to ask adults not to raise their voice, these people are here to protect their children from the abuse that has, that has been done to them and continues to be done to them. These children are going to have psychological issues as they get older, and these, and these parents are upset. You know why? Because they love their children more than you do, okay? And, and everything you have done is really unconstitutional. Now, whether it's a mandate, you, you didn't, you know, the mandates came down or, or the orders came down from Governor Northam, and they had exceptions, and you never allowed the exceptions. You want to do your own thing, you want to be the dictators that you are, you know? And, and some of you are the most disrespectful group of adults I've seen in my life, you know? And by the way, you know, I heard someone mention about the valedictorian. My, my oldest son, a black son, okay, he graduated Bayside High School as the first black valedictorian and only one of three in the history of Virginia Beach public schools. You know, how dare you really remove that opportunity from another black child to excel to the height of that, of that feat, okay? Because they use that, they cannot do, and to tell them with the CRT stuff that you can't do that, you can't do what a white kid can do because you're black, because they're trying to hold you down. And so you remove the goal so no black or white child can even reach that pinnacle, and, and they need that sometimes to use to compete for college and for medical schools. If that option, if valedictorian was not available to my son, he may not be a doctor right now, because those are competition things.
Thirty seconds.
Would ask you guys to really bring back valedictorian and salutatorian, and, and I would ask you not to be so smug, because all of you sit up there with your mask on, you know, and, and push the agenda, and, and all of you. I've, I've seen all of you out in town, out publicly, without your mask on, you know? So let's stop, you know, with the games, let's stop with the masquerades, end the masking, and end the abuse of, of these children, and, and do not disrespect parents because they are adults.
Our next speaker, number two is not online. We will go to Sarah Gerloff. Please unmute.
Welcome.
We move on to our next speaker, Shay Coleman. Please unmute.
Welcome. Can you hear me okay?
Just speak up a little more, please, ma'am.
How's that? Congress shall, thank you. Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the right of the people to peacefully assemble. Section 12 of the Virginia Constitution echoes the same, and under local city and town governing explains that whenever the governing body of any such unit shall fail to perform the duties so prescribed in the manner herein directed, a suit shall lie on behalf of any citizen thereof to compel performance by the governing body. So you may know that courts have repeatedly held the authorities aren't justified in breaking up public protest just because they slow traffic, inconvenience pedestrians are annoying or make people, make other people mad. Example, Edwards versus South Carolina and Coats versus City of Cincinnati. Based on law, the public square, there's less leeway to restrict demonstrations and other gatherings in places that are traditionally considered public forums for free expression, such as sidewalks, parks, and public squares, than on other types of public property like military installations, prisons, courthouses, and airport terminals. Limits on size gatherings. Protest-sized ordinance struck down housing, which was a case, Housing Works Incorporated versus Safar in 2000. As the court pointed out, the ordinance wasn't narrowly tailored to serve the city's legitimate safety concerns, and it could allow city officials to stop people from gathering based on their point of view. Permits. Generally, cities and other governmental bodies, like public universities, are allowed to require groups to get permits for demonstrations, parades, street festivals, and other large gatherings. But courts have struck down these requirements when they impose higher fees or other obstacles linked to the demonstrators' controversial viewpoints and the expected response. And for example, you'll want to look up Forsyth County, Georgia versus nationalist movement. So I say to you, are you requiring permits because we pose traffic impediments? Are you requiring a permit because we are keeping people from being able to get to and from their
Thirty seconds.
Are you requiring a permit because we are causing violence and doing inappropriate things while we peacefully assemble? No, you are not. You are requiring a permit because you do not agree with our views. And that, my friends, goes against our state constitution and federal law. And when you violate federal law, you are subject to persecution from the citizens and the state of Virginia.
And that is time. Speaker three is online, so Sarah Gerloff, please unmute.
Welcome.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. It is clear to see from the results of the election and from the thousands of signatures that have been collected to recall six members of this board, what is most, of most concern to Virginians? It is their children, what their children are being taught, and how their children are being taught. Virginians are fed up with the behavior on display by certain members as it is increasingly clear you do not have our children's best interests in mind. As I have stated previously, several of you do not understand the Constitution, meaning you do not comprehend nor you do you stand under its authority. You have therefore become the domestic enemies you have sworn an oath to protect we, the people, from. You are no longer leaders, but instead rulers who make up new rules as Virginians are fed up with the behavior on display by certain members, as it is increasingly clear, you do not have our children's best interests in mind. As I have stated previously, several of you do not understand the Constitution, meaning you do not comprehend, nor you do you stand under its authority. You have therefore become the domestic enemies you have sworn an oath to protect we the people from. You are no longer leaders, but instead rulers who make up new rules as we go along in an attempt to control us. The latest rule is not allowing us to peacefully assemble in the parking lot that our tax-paying money has helped pay for. This is yet another First Amendment violation, and, and it adds to your continually growing rap sheet. Due to your ignorance and stubbornness, you continue to commit crime after crime, no wonder our students are falling behind, since they are under the control of ignorant school board members. Some of you have no business sitting in that seat. The longer you sit in that seat, and more against the Creator, the hotter that seat will become. You have clearly lost your way and are harming others due to your ignorance and stubbornness and greed. I sent you an email with an article on the sociopath, apath, empath triad, also known as S-E-A-T, seat. I hope you have had time to read it. It clearly depicts what is going on with this school board. Spence plays the role of the sociopath due to his greed. His love of money seems to be his top priority as superintendent. He is out of order. His priorities are not in line. Students first is the proper order. Laura Vicki and Carolyn Weems play the empaths, since they follow common sense and have courage of conviction. They are morally correct. The rest of you are apaths. You are pawns in this game of chess. You go along to get along, are easily manipulated and deceived. Instead of using common sense and thinking, you follow along and jump off the cliff one after the other. You are being played by the sociopath, getting used and abused. Wake up, ladies.
Thirty seconds.
The more you follow Spence, the more damage is done, as your decisions affect thousands of innocent children and their families. Neither people already see the damage done to our children, just look at the school, the sexual misconduct in Loudoun County, and the direct correlation to the transgender policy that you have also voted to put in place. You are putting our kids in danger. The Creator's army grows by the day. Nothing can stop this train. You are about to get steamrolled, because this is the eleventh hour.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Daniella Seaford. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. So last time I signed up to speak, I was up till midnight waiting, and I never got the opportunity, but I appreciate now that it's only seven thirty. Speaking on the same subject as I have already emailed all of you regarding wearing masks during PE. The State Health Commissioner Norman Oliver, as well as the World Health Organization and the CDC, all suggest no masks during exercise for various health reasons, on top of the fact that when kids are sweating and their masks get wet, microorganisms start growing on it. Carolyn Rye emailed me back maybe once or twice, saying that she felt like no further action was needed, and that's not true, because there's only one school that I know of, and that's Great Neck Middle School. Thank you very much to the staff there, that the kids are not wearing masks during PE when they're exercising. If you look at some of these children during PE, they're unhealthy as it is because of COVID, because of what they're eating and putting in their bodies. COVID should be the last thing that they're worried about, and they're exercising, getting their heart rates up, and trying to get their heart rates up with a face that's covered, their nose and mouth are covered. This is unacceptable. You should be following the State Health Commissioner, who's, who are doctors, as well as the World Health Organization, as well as the CDC, but yet you're making your own rules. So let it be known that kids should not be wearing masks during PE at all, according to Norman Oliver, this, our State Health Commissioner. That's one issue I have. The other issue I have is regarding boys going into girls bathrooms, for obvious reasons. I said from day one, there was going to be a rape somewhere, and yes, it happened immediately. I have a friend whose daughter will not go into the bathroom and not drink any water all day, because she doesn't want to be in a boy's bathroom, in a girl's bathroom, worried that a boy is going to walk in on her. But a solution might be, get rid of those walls, let all the boys and girls wash their hands together, but create wall, doors that are floor-to-ceiling, just like they have at the Hilton Hotel, or some of the Starbucks in New York, where there is no boy-girl bathrooms, there are just unisex bathrooms, and no one has to be scared to go into a bathroom and worry if they're going to get raped or not. That is unacceptable and disgusting. As a female, a very strong one, I would be afraid to go into a bathroom, knowing that a man or boy might be in there. The other concern I have is regarding fall sports. I don't understand why the common sense is that boy, the fall sports banquet in the cafe is not okay, but Van Booster Club can have a craft show in the cafe open to the public. We, we need to really reel it into common sense, please. I real, I really would appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pilar Adike. Please unmute.
Hi, yes, I'm unmuted.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, good evening. I'd like to thank Ms. Tony Otto for doing a great job, and I was supposed to be first speaker and ended up being the last. So tonight, I, I want to thank each one of you all for being here. I know that, I mean, this is, going through the agenda, it's, wow, it's a lot of stuff. And I was going to focus on the fifty-three, fifty-four million dollars that is potentially in a reappropriation fund for the school board and superintendent to allocate. But I just felt like we need to look at this school system and, and recognize that it is in crisis. And we can all agree, there's a shortage of teachers, we're short bus drivers, there aren't enough substitute teachers or homebound tutors, there are more fights breaking out. I'm guessing that there's not police officers in the schools, probably because there's a shortage of police. Much-needed parent and grandparent volunteers are blocked from supporting the schools. And, you know, I look at how, at this list of how this money will be used, and I'm stunned. But even bigger than that, if we pull out and just look at the dynamic here, this chaos that has been created is intentional. And I want to come to the root cause of it. And here's what we have. We have that most people are still operating under paralyzing fear. Fear that has been fed to us by our elected representatives, fear that has been fed to us continually through the media. And I really want to ask you all, and I'm saying this for our community, you don't need to be afraid anymore. We know the virus has a survivability rate of ninety-nine point nine seven percent for our children. The majority of you, of you have shown by your actions on the school board that you don't even believe in your own masking-up policy. So if you are truly so afraid for the health and safety of everyone, let us truly examine the research, the information, and the science that is out there, and consider the efficacy of proven medications, such as hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, azithromycin, monoclonal antibodies supplemented with zinc, vitamin C, and vitamin D. All of this, I, I truly believe this chaos, aside from other intended consequences, it is designed...
Thirty seconds.
...to send, to send our schools into a virtual system. It's not about a dreaded disease. It's about playing on and manipulating people's fears and using that to maximize profit for some, but definitely not for all. Always follow the money. Money for all the COVID protocols in our schools, the mask policy, the push-to-mate education of our youth virtual. Follow the money. The truth will always come out, and I pray each of you carefully considers which side you are on. We can see you are...
And that is time.
...by your actions, and we are...
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and for all our speakers this evening. We are now at the information portion of our meeting, and we are beginning with item A, textbook adoption, practical nursing, anatomy, and physiology. We, and, good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to provide you with information regarding the School of Practical Nursing's textbook adoption committee's recommendation for an updated textbook for implementation in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to thank Family and Consumer Science Coordinator Kathleen Vuno, selection committee members, and industry experts for dedicating their time and efforts to recommend the text proposed this evening. The replacement cycle for nursing texts is governed by the Virginia Board of Nursing. Accreditation standards requiring textbooks have a copyright date within five years throughout the life of the adopted textbook. Therefore, the adoption process for practical nursing textbooks is conducted more frequently than other courses. The committee has selected Memler's Structure and Function of the Human Body as its first choice. This text meets all of the national standards, as well as the Virginia Department of Education's competencies. The chosen text is most appropriate for our practical nursing students, and is comprehensive and geared specifically toward nursing students. The physical and online resources also support a more personalized learning environment that students can access on demand. This slide outlines the cost implications for the initial and total implementation of the first-choice textbook for both courses. The total cost involved for the first year of implementation is two thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The total cost for the five-year implementation with, with replacements is projected to be just over twenty-six hundred dollars. This recommended text meets the needs of the program and the state requirements for accreditation at less than half the cost of the second-choice option outlined in your board packet. Thank you for your consideration of the committee's recommendation. With us this evening via Zoom is Kathleen Vuno, Family and Consumer Science Coordinator, and we would be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Colleagues, looks like we're good.
All right, thank you very much.
So now we have a list of new courses, and we have Ms. Dr. Rogers at the podium.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. This evening, we will be providing you with several new courses, and a program in technical and career education, and several exciting courses in our fine arts program for your consideration. The courses being presented to you for consideration are in direct alignment to our goals one and three of the Conference two thousand and twenty-five, where we're planning to increase student access and opportunities for advanced level coursework for our students, as well as to work toward engaging all of our students in rigorous, authentic, and student-centered learning, in order to help them to identify their passions and take ownership of their learning. This evening, Dr. Sarah Lockett, who is our Director of Technical and Career Education, will provide you with information on the proposed technical and career education courses and programs, followed by Dr. Nicole DeVries, Director of K-12 Programs, who will provide you with information on the proposed new fine arts courses. Courses with that, Dr. Lockett.
Welcome again.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to provide you with information regarding the proposed addition of new technical and career education courses and dual enrollment pathways. Tonight's presentation focuses on refining technical and career education offerings for high school students and adding some exciting new focused, career-focused dual enrollment opportunities. The first proposed change consolidates two semester sequences into year-long courses, providing more flexibility for students and teachers. The two proposals that follow will create new dual enrollment career pathways in veterinary assisting and shipbuilding. I would first like to share information about the consolidation of semester class sequences into year-long classes. The proposed course Photography and Communications Technology is a single-block, year-long course at all high schools. The course is designed to combine our current semesters of photography and printing, and computers and communication technology, beginning in the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Combining these two semester courses will give teachers flexibility in planning instruction and scheduling industry credential testing. While we are proposing to change the structure of the courses, the content will not change. Students enrolled in Photography and Communications Technology will take part in experiences in the fields of imaging technology, graphic production, video and media, technical design, and various modes of communicating information using data and computers. Students develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and learn about the impact of communication on society and potential career fields relating to communications. In a parallel model, we also propose combining semesters of parenting and child development and introduction to childcare occupations into a year-long course. Again, this is only a structural change intended to grant students and teachers flexibility. The courses will be taught in labs and with staff already in place in the high schools for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. No new expenses are anticipated to support the shift from semesters to a year-long model. Veterinary Science one and two is a double-blocked, two-semester, three-credit course sequence proposed to be taught by faculty from Tidewater Community College on their Virginia Beach campus, with transportation to TCC via existing advanced technology center buses. These courses are designed to meet all state regulations and testing for licensed veterinary assistants, and will prepare students for a career after high school. The program includes classroom instruction, lab practice, and a coordinated internship. Enrollment is limited to twenty students, and admission will be by application. This slide shows a sample schedule for each semester, with most TCC courses meeting Monday through Thursday. On Friday, students will complete a one-credit college success skills course during the fall semester, and time is also reserved to meet the internship requirement for the TCC Career Study Certificate. The courses are designed to meet all the state regulations and testing for licensed veterinary assistants. This dual enrollment offering will provide students the opportunity to earn three high school credits and at least seventeen college credits. Students who complete this one-year program or earn a Career Study Certificate in veterinary assisting from TCC, this program prepares students to be a licensed veterinary technician. Tidewater Communities Colleges Program is approved by the National Association of Veterinary Technicians in America, NAVTA. Upon graduation, participants are eligible to sit for the national exam and become approved veterinary assistants. Students may transfer the seventeen credits from this study certificate into an associate's degree in veterinary technology that leads to licensure as a, as a veterinary technician. And we have one further program to talk about. The second dual enrollment pathway is a joint effort with our industry partners at Newport News Shipbuilding. The proposed program is expected to be offered to high school students in Virginia Beach, Hampton, and Newport News, giving participating students the opportunity to take Newport News Shipbuilding Apprentice School classes online from apprentice school faculty during the school day for dual enrollment credit. This program will give enrolled students a leg up on the competition for coveted apprentice school acceptance. Students who complete the program will also shorten the time needed to complete an apprenticeship post-secondary by completing required coursework prior to their high school graduation. The program is slated to begin in the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, with thirty seats available to students in participating localities. The table on the screen outlines the semester courses that make up the Apprentice X program for high school students. The left column shows ten college courses in which students in the program will enroll. The right column shows paired high school courses for which students will also get credit. The students in the two-year program will earn thirty-nine point five college credits through the fully accredited apprentice school, and nine high school credits. The program is open to rising juniors during the summer before their junior year. Accepted students will be introduced to Newport News Shipbuilding and the Apprentice School. They will also concurrently enroll in an introductory course in digital shipbuilding and technology for one college credit. During the fall and spring of year one, students will enroll in a pair of semester classes that meet daily. This schedule will allow students to complete four dual enrollment courses online during the first year of the program. Those courses include drafting, ship construction one, mathematics one, and ship construction two. During the summer before the senior year, students in the program will take mathematics two for dual enrollment credit. The program will complete with students taking four more classes in a daily block over the course of the student's senior year. In the spring before graduation, students may choose to apply to the Apprentice School, transferring the thirty-nine point five hours. They may also choose to transfer thirty-five of these credits to another institution of higher education, or they may choose to apply for employment with Newport News Shipbuilding. No matter what the student chooses, they have a solid foundation for a career in the shipbuilding industry. The budget impact for each of these proposals is minimal. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, consolidating the high school semester elective courses will not create any additional expenses, as this change will be supported by existing faculty and equipment. The cost to implement veterinary science one and two is also minimal. These dual enrollment courses will be taught on campus by TCC faculty. Enrolled students and their families will be responsible for dual enrollment fees for the course. The cost to students is estimated to be seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, split over two semesters, three hundred and sixty dollars in the fall, four hundred and five dollars in the spring. Books, resource materials, and other ancillary expenses are estimated to be four thousand dollars per year, and will be covered within the existing budget for technical and career education and the Carl D. Perkins Grant. All costs associated with the Apprentice X program will be covered by Newport News Shipbuilding. We are excited about this community partnership. We are... And also the partnerships with higher education that will help provide these opportunities for students. I believe we will now welcome Nicole DeVries.
Thank you, Dr. Lockett. Good evening, everybody.
Welcome.
I'm here this evening to present information about several new courses, the first of which at the high school level that I am seeking your approval for. This particular course and... Old habits die hard. This particular course, Advanced PE Unified Physical Education, would be an additional course to the existing Advanced PE pathway for 11th and 12th grade students. Unified Physical Education is unique in that students with varying abilities will work together as they participate in lifetime activities such as pickleball, yoga, and circuit training. In addition, students will collaborate on special projects that promote emotional wellness, inclusion, and community service. Students will also explore career paths related to what they are learning in this course, including therapeutic recreation and careers working with special populations. The idea for this class was originated by BBCPS High School Health and PE Teacher Jen Vedder, who is with us today, as part of the BBCPS Innovation Network. This network committed to supporting selected teacher projects that reinforce the graduate profile and had the potential to be scaled. Ms. Vedder's project, the Unified Health and Physical Education Project, focused on work with Special Olympics Virginia and her unified track and field team at Bayside High School. This project was the catalyst for wanting more inclusive opportunities built into the school day for all students to be able to work on skills such as being personally and socially responsible, communication and collaboration, and learning how to solve real-world problems that were relevant to them. There are no additional costs associated with the implementation of this course as PE departments already have the equipment needed. No additional staffing allocations are anticipated. This slide shows a sample of the sequence of health and PE coursework that is now available to 11th and 12th grade students following the approval of several other Advanced PE options by the School Board in 2019. These courses included personal fitness, recreational activities, and the Certified Personal Trainer Course. The proposed addition of Unified Physical Education that you see included on this slide is paired with recreational activities. The next course proposals are actually a series of courses focusing on digital media and design, switching over to fine arts now, to expand the visual arts program offered at the high school level. These courses have been developed together to create an additional upper-level pathway for students interested in pursuing art in their 10th through 12th grade years, and includes the addition of another advanced placement option for students. This pathway is an important way for students to engage in contemporary art production and exhibition, as well as to develop the skills necessary to succeed in career fields that correspond to such skill sets. School divisions around the state such as Norfolk, Newport News, Henrico, and Chesterfield Counties have had similar course pathways through their art departments for several years, preparing students to succeed in college and university programs that focus on digital art design. The addition of these courses in BBCPS will offer a much-needed area of study for our students who want to continue their art education at their comprehensive high schools. So the first course proposal is to implement Art Two: Digital Media and Design at our comprehensive high schools. In this course, students will examine the history and function of technology in art while creating their own body of work using imaging applications. Digital media and design courses will use IMAC labs to simulate the environment of a traditional visual arts studio. This course will expose and build the skills and techniques necessary for a student to continue down a digital art career path. Art Two: Digital Media and Design is intended for students in 10th grade and up, and Art One: Art Foundations is the prerequisite course. Art Three: Digital Media and Design builds upon the foundations laid in Art Two, which is the prerequisite for this particular class. In Art Three, students will engage more deeply in the practical side of graphic design, exploring commercial uses and products. They will create conceptual art, focusing on how artistic skills and creativity lend themselves to the production of digital art-making. An emphasis will be placed on portfolio development to prepare students for college applications, future careers, and/or taking the Advanced Placement Digital Art Class. The Advanced Placement Digital Art Course is for students who have found success in proceeding, the preceding courses, and would benefit from the additional challenge. In most cases, this course will be taught side-by-side with other AP Studio classes or Art Three: Digital Media and Design. The course will follow all college board guidelines, and portfolios will be submitted using the Advanced Placement Studio 2D Art and Design Requirements. For the first time, our students from all 11 BBCPS high schools will be prepared to submit a portfolio using digital art as their selected medium. This slide illustrates the sequence of coursework in the proposed pathway. We are proposing a phased-in implementation approach because of the planning that is needed for these courses to be established. The Digital Media and Design Pathway will require a dedicated space to set up an IMAC lab at each school. Art Two will begin implementation with two schools in the 2022-23 school year. The goal is to have a fully implemented Digital Media and Design Pathway by the 2026-27 school year. I'm really excited to let you know that there is a great deal of interest and support for this student opportunity in the community. The companies whose logos are represented on this slide are all digital art studios and organizations that have already committed to supporting our digital art teachers and students by doing the following: serving as an outlet for teachers to ask questions about processes, tools, and content; visiting with students via Zoom and in-person to serve as advisors and share their profession; and serving as an authentic audience and providing professional feedback to students on their digital portfolios. This slide shows the cost breakdown per year through the full implementation of the Digital Media and Design Pathway in 26-27 school year. The equipment needed for these courses includes IMAC computers. IMACs were chosen for these courses so that the student experience aligns with industry standards in professional and college settings, thereby preparing students for success. Additional equipment needed includes digital drawing tablets, printers, furniture, and accessories needed to fully integrate a lab. There are not any equipment costs beginning in the 25-26 school year because by that point, all IMAC labs will have been established with the implementation of Art Two. Instructional materials include the cost of paper, toner, and exhibition materials for student displays. Professional learning costs include training for teachers on each of the courses prior to the year of implementation. We do not anticipate any additional art teachers' allocations at this time. However, we would love for this course pathway to take off and have significant enrollment, and later on down the line, in a few years, we may have to revisit that. This concludes our presentation on course proposals. I am joined by Bayside PE Teacher Jen Vedder, Visual Arts Coordinator Chris Buener, and Dr. Lockett, and any guests she may have with her, and we welcome any questions on any of the course proposals at this time.
Thank you, Dr. DeVries. We'll start with Mrs. Melnick, then Mrs. Anderson.
Dr. DeVries, so this has, all of this work has not taken place in the last couple of months, and so I commend you all because you have planned and executed this work. It's such a difficult time for educators, right? Like, all the things that have been going on over the past 18 months and the fact that you have stayed the course and that you are, that you're presenting programs that are so amazing for our students, and this is another area where Virginia Beach really shines, and it's with our technical and career education. I am thrilled with the veterinary assistant program. It's hard to get your animal into a vet now, and the fact that we are preparing our students for that next step, kudos to you. The preschool program at the Career and Technical Education Center, one of my, one of my children went to that preschool program, is that still there, operating, and that combined program, will, will that?
It is still there, and it is operating, and we do have preschool kids enrolled.
And, perfect, and will they, will this new program, this combined program, also?
This is the program at the home high school, so students right now are taking semesters at their home high schools of the childcare occupations and the parenting. So we're just putting those semesters together. That's a lesson learned from four-by-four that gives us some flexibility. So it's really just a structural change and doesn't impact at all what's going on at the Technical Career Education Center.
Okay, excellent. And then my last is about the shipbuilding apprenticeship program. So one of the boys on the Kellam baseball team is a student there now in the four-year program, and he loves it so much, and one of the things I want to make sure that the public knows is that they also have sports, and they have a D1 program. It's a small D1 program. It's part of the IMAC, and it's amazing for students who know that this is maybe what they want to do, and they might play a sport. They have male and female sporting, sporting programs, and it's, it's just an amazing opportunity for our students, and so I wish, I wish it were still packed in here with people who could hear the remarkable things that you just brought forward, and I thank you. And again, I'm going to repeat it, thank you for staying, staying steady through the storm and for, for really doing right by our students every day. You proved this with, with this work, and I am deeply grateful. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you for designing these innovative opportunities for students. As Ms. Melnick just said, those people who have been so critical of our school system and of this board, I wish they were here to hear these opportunities that are being created for our students. As was noted, you guys have never stopped working. You've worked double-hard during this pandemic, and we appreciate it. One of my questions was what had to do, I think you answered it, you said that some of these courses are being offered at the, at, at first I thought that some of them were just being offered at the Technical and Career Education Center, but, but you're stating that there are courses that are being offered in the regular high schools.
Correct. The Apprentice X Program with Newport News Shipbuilding will be done via distance learning and the model that we used so well last year, so they can actually stay in their homeschool. They could really do it from anywhere, and it's one, one block per day, so two blocks instead of, you know, four blocks that the students give up when they go to our centers. It's a nice add-on for a student that did naval architecture early on in their high school career at the ATC. It's also a nice add-on for a student that maybe did another pathway and has some interest in finding out what, what, you know, those kind of careers are available in our region. So, so we're super excited about it, and it's free dual enrollment for these students, so no matter what they choose after high school, it, it's just a great way to learn about that industry.
So, so basically, you're saying we learned a lot last year, you took some lemons and you've made some lemonade now. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just totally amazed at these, at these opportunities that these students are going to have, like the direct technical, I mean, they're going to come out, and some of these students are going to come out ready for, to get a job right away. This is fantastic. And then if they want to further their career, they can utilize some of those credits to a higher learning institution, and the new courses that are comprehensive high schools are just, they're just perfect to help students prepare for college and future careers. These proposals are just proof that BBCPS is leading the way to be a premier school system that prepares students for the future, and I really appreciate all your work. I, I just, I can't say it enough, and I hope those people who have been so critical of everything that has gone on the last couple of years realize that, you know, we, we do care about students, and we are trying to do our best to do what's best for students in the future, so thank you so much.
Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Franklin.
Excellent job. I'm so excited about all of these programs, and thank you to all the community partners. Thank you for highlighting that, I really appreciate it, especially Newport News Shipbuilding. You mentioned that there are going to be 30 seats between three cities, correct?
Yes, and I don't believe that all the cities have taken this to their board yet, so it's 30 seats equally divided between the cities. We could get some more than the 10 share of those initial seats, depending on whether all the school systems stay in and what their, their recruitment looks like. I did verify that.
What's the process to be accepted? I mean, is there an application, and then who chooses?
Yeah, there will be an application process, and, and those will be evaluated similar to our students that go to the tech center, the ATC, so that will be done along with Newport News Shipbuilding partners and, and folks at our centers to, to try to, to find out, you know, to, to level out those seats and see how many of them we can fill.
And if students are interested, I mean, would they have an opportunity to go visit the apprentice school?
Yes, so the design of the program, if you noticed, it had two summer courses. The first one is just a one-credit college course for concurrent enrollment. It allows the students to do that and kind of get their feet wet and visit that summer before they make that full commitment. So, so that was, that was kind of purposely designed to have that, that intro to everything to come over to see, to do before they actually sit down in the classroom for the first time in the fall.
Excellent, I love that. And then I was so excited when I was reading in my packet about the Unified Health and PE. I know Ms. Vedder has such a heart for our students with special needs, and I just know she, she does so much, and I've seen her in action, and thank you, Ms. Vedder, for all that you do, really appreciate it, and I want to come, I want to, I want to sign up for the class. So this is going to be every high school, correct? Is going to be offered this program?
Yeah, so it'll be offered at every high school, and then whether or not it, the class makes with enrollment will just depend on, you know, students signing up for it, but we will certainly make sure that our next step, if it's approved, will be to go on a campaign to school counselors and health and PE teachers to make sure that they understand what the course entails so that they can market it correctly and really seek out the students who they feel like would benefit most from it.
Let me know, I'll help promote it. Thanks.
Mrs. Franklin.
Well, first of all, I loved the earlier presentation talking about enroll, enlist, or employ. I've actually done all three. I've gone to college, I've enlisted, and I am currently employed, thank goodness. And I just want to say that there is a pathway to success in any of those paths, so I'm just really excited that we are creating those pathways to work for right out of high school, and I just want to just promote this Newport News Shipbuilding because one of my daughter's friends went to the shipbuilding school and got into welding, makes a great living right now, and so that is just a great path as well for anybody interested, you know, in deciding not to go to, to, you know, further their education post-high school. Yeah, I also just wanted to ask you really quickly, oh, by the way, I also want to promote yoga, I think that everybody should try yoga class, by the way. But the digital, the digital program right now, I love that, but I do have a question about that. Do we have that right now through ATC, or is, so is this a brand-new program, or is this?
So this is a new class. There is a similar course offered at the ATC that Dr. Lockett could probably tell you more about than I, but there are some differences. So this course, they both do focus on graphic design, they both have digital portfolios involved. The ATC course is obviously limited in scope to how many students they can accept, so part of the idea was we wanted to broaden that. But the other part is that the digital art courses really focus on, have a fine arts focus, where they're still focusing on drawing and design and reflecting on and reflecting on those design elements that every other fine arts and visual arts course in our school division focuses on. So it really takes a little bit of a different approach. Um, plus they could stay in their high school. So we don't anticipate it will conflict or compete at all because it's really two different pathways. And again, we will make sure that, um, the school counselors really understand because they really are two different pathways and they, they would be able to gear kids in the right direction based on conversations with them and their interests.
And you feel like this is just gonna be another way to make us more competitive?
Sure. Yeah, it's a big field right now. Um, there's, many colleges have degree programs and, and, and the opportunities for career are, are pretty substantial. You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I'm equally as excited as everybody else has already said about, uh, all of these different new opportunities. I did have just a couple, uh, questions just to understand how we're gonna look in rollout. For the parenting and early learning one and the, well, for the consolidated classes, does that mean that students are now unable to take one without the other? If they just had like a free semester and just wanted to take one of those, are they still able to do that or because of the consolidation?
We have not yet retired the semesters. Um, I, I think as we look at high school redesign, we start to look at giving schools flexibility. Um, so this is a little easier for a school that wants to do a four-by-four in that section. Uh, we don't see a lot of students that take one and not the other. We do from time to time see a student that maybe had come very close to passing the first semester and then is not able to move on. So that alleviates that. They have time to recover from that and, and bring that grade that was very close to passing up before the end of the year. So that's some of that additional flexibility we talk about for students. So I, I, I think we're gonna find that the benefits of it far outweigh, um, you know, a, a, a student here or there that might wanna pick up just a semester course.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, um, some of my other ones were already kind of asked, oh, with the veterinary assistant program, which again, very excited to hear about, um, because it's taken at TCC and, uh, it was mentioned that we would use the, the busing situation that we currently have through the VOTEC, uh, buses. Are, are we looking at any other options? Is there any way that we could leverage HRT with bus passes? If there are any direct, uh, busing, do we have the busing to add another busing situation when we already don't have busing? It's kind of where I'm trying to find out.
And that, I think that was, that was part of the thought of adding that when we looked at expanding programs. Um, we're already doing this in a couple of areas. Our kids that are taking our lodging management, the hotel courses are already doing it, that exact thing. Um, as are some students at the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy that are coming over to TCC. And they're leveraging those ATC buses that historically have not been full. Um, so since we have the space, it doesn't mean, w- we, we don't have to add any runs. Um, and of course, some of the students will drive. There is parking there. So, um, it, it, it makes sense for us versus adding a program that might be off-site somewhere where we, we'd really have to think about those questions a little harder.
Okay, perfect. And then my last question was in regards to the, uh, digital media classes. Uh, again, yay, excited. Um, with the rollout with initially picking two schools to start and then four schools and five schools, do we have any idea of what schools we're starting with and how those schools are being chosen?
Yeah, so we, um, have had some preliminary conversations with two principals of two of the high schools. Um, and what I can tell you so far is that those schools have been chosen because the, um, art teachers played a significant role in the, um, we had a committee formed. Uh, Mr. Buhner met, um, often with this committee to form, um, what the standards and the, and the scope and sequence of the course would look like, um, what would be needed, what materials do we think we'll need for it? And these particular two art teachers are former graphic designers themselves. So they have experience in the, um, now, not every art teacher is going to have that at every school, but we figured that was a good starting point because then they will serve as mentors to, as we roll it out to other schools in future years.
Okay, and that was kind of part of where I was asking, do all of our, uh, teachers, our art teachers have the, uh, training for this or are they gonna need additional training to be able to teach these courses?
Some may need some additional training, but Mr. Buhner did a really nice job of, um, making sure that when he, uh, put the committee together that he had good representation across high schools and, um, with teachers who are either have really high interest and high interest in learning themselves to make sure that it would be successful once implemented in their schools or have experience themselves as well.
Okay, sounds good. And last one, I know you guys have done. The IMAC labs.
Yes.
Um, I assume that means that the, the MACs are gonna stay in the lab.
Yes.
And so this is gonna be courses where everything could be done during class time and there's not gonna be any assignments because they're not gonna take the, they're not gonna have these laptops.
Correct. They may have some things to do that don't require IMAC la- you know, the IMAC equipment outside as they put their digital portfolios together um, and things like that. But anything that requires the, the software and the labs themselves would stay in the classroom.
Okay, I, I'm excited. I'm excited to, to see it roll out. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
And there's a class, or just to add to, there's a class at, um, ATC that has the IMAC la- okay. Um, that's Lee's class.
It is.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's really a great, and for anybody who doesn't know, his class is part of the, um, they design the Strawberry Festival posters every year. And so that's an amazing, um, that's another thing I invite you to go and, and, and be a part of and watch. It's really, and they present it and it, it's chosen by the community or, but, but by the Strawberry Festival community, so, um.
Their, their work is all over Virginia Beach. If you go to the Weston at Town Center, their, uh, logo on the door for the restaurant was them. Um, uh, you can find them all over town.
Yeah.
Work at the ATC.
Kudos to you. And Ms. Vedder, are you the former or maybe still cross-country coach? But you used to do that? Yes, you are a rock star. Yeah, yeah. Mrs. Manning's right, yeah.
Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it is so refreshing just to hear what you're saying about our students. And I'd like to thank you for, um, continuing to bring about a robust curriculum for our students. It's always something exciting and we are always keeping up with the market of employment or what they're asking for. I recently talked with a gentleman that asked, did we have a veterinary, um, curriculum? And I said, you know, I said, I don't think so. I said, but, uh, wait on us. I said, wait on us. And here you present, and it was just a few days ago, and here you present this. And it is so exciting and I just can't express my, um, uh, excitement about what you're doing, you know. You're making our students skill-ready. Uh, and you're preparing them for a higher education, both, uh, preparation and, and advantage. And I, believe me when I tell you, when the Virginia Beach City, uh, Division Schools jump on anything, we validate a program. Everyone look at what we do and we validate it. And I'm so sure they're gonna see what we, we're gonna do and we're gonna walk right into it. You also take the time to, to certify, verify, and make sure that this is a good program for the future of our students. I do appreciate that because you go through all of the, uh, for lack of a better word, vetting. You go through all of that to make sure that all of our students, that's what I particularly love because all of our students will benefit from this. Thank you so much. And as Ms. Milnick has said, uh, even though we've been through such a, a, a crisis or, uh, unprecedented time, you continued the work. I hope that everyone hear what you're doing because I definitely appreciate it and you keeping this, uh, this division functional. Thank you so much.
And so the only thing that comes to mind for me to add to this wonderful conversation is, uh, now, and of course, the focus should always be on the students, but I also see this from the, the teacher standpoint. And, you know, teacher retention is such another one of our challenges. And any, in ways like this where we can empower my, our teachers and we, we already have with, with, uh, with their input into the development of this, but it doesn't stop here. It's as, as one of my colleagues mentioned, so it will demand some additional professional development for some of them to rise to that AP level or whatever. And whether we're talking the art or, or the PE, again, I'm just putting myself right now in the shoes of the teacher. You know, how many scores of teachers are going to be challenged and empowered, you know, to, to stick around and to see this through and see the fruits of their labors. So, so we thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the, the consent agenda. There's, I'll, I'll go through the list and then we'll ask for the resolutions to be read aloud and then we'll seek, um, mo- a motion to motions. So, uh, the consent agenda item tonight, under resolutions, we have National Military Family Appreciation Month, National Native American Heritage Month, American Education Week, National School Psychology Week. Then we also have B, uh, Section 14B, Recommendation of General Contractor for First Colonial and Salem High Schools Stadium, Turf and Track Overlay, Synthetic Turf and Track. And C, Policy Review Committee Recommendations, uh, Policy 360, Safety Radon, Policy 372, Safe, again, Safety Water Management Program to Prevent Legionella Growth. That's the new one that was introduced to us last meeting. And three, Policy 530, Graduation Requirements, Diploma Certificates. So, uh, could I ask Mrs. Anderson to read the first resolution?
I appreciate the opportunity to read this resolution because it's the wife of a career military officer and now the mother of two active-duty Coast Guardsmen. I quite understand the life of the military family. National Military Family Appreciation Month, November 2021. Whereas, our country owes the daily freedoms to the members of the armed forces, their family members and loved ones who share in their service and sacrifice. And whereas, we celebrate the exceptional service, strength, and character of the approximate, of the approximately sixteen thousand military-connected youth and families of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And whereas, we acknowledge that military families face unique challenges due to the deployment, reintegration, servicing combat zones, and frequently relocations based on duty assignments. And whereas, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach reaffirms their commitment to providing the resources and programs to support military-connected students academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Boards compass to 2025, strategic plan calls for the continued creation of opportunities for military families and community members to purposely partner with schools in supporting student achievement, aspirations, and social-emotional development. And whereas, November is recognized as National Military Family Appreciation Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of November 2021 as National Military Family Appreciation Month. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all school staff and community members to initiate, support, and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected students make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, approved by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this ninth day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. And now, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. In honor of my grandmother, Vergie, I'm reading the Resolution of National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas, as the first people to inhabit North America, American Indians and Alaskan natives have profoundly shaped our country's character and cultural heritage. And whereas, Virginia began celebrating American Indian Day in 1987. And whereas, Virginia is home to seven federally-recognized tribal nations, including the Chickahominy Indian Tribe, Chickahominy Indian Tribe Eastern Division, Monakin Indian Tro- Nation, Nansaman Indian Nation, Pamunkie Indian Tribe, Rappahannock Tribe, and Upper Matapani Indian Tribe, as well as four additional state-recognized tribes, including the Cheranhanka, Nadoway Indian Tribe, Matapani Indian Tribe, Nadoway Indian Tribe of Virginia, and Patawomeck Indian Tribe of Virginia. And whereas, Native American men and women contribute to all areas of life in Virginia in the City of Virginia Beach, including but not limited to government, business, arts and sciences, medicine, education, law, law enforcement, and the military. And whereas, through the study of Native Americans and their traditions and values inspired and continue to inspire the ideals of self-governance and determination that are the framework of our nation. And whereas, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, through its core values and educational equity policy, are committed to the cross-cultural competence within our school division, now therefore be it, uh, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and celebrate American Indians in Virginia and our schools, whose abilities and contributions strengthen our city and school's diverse culture. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. And now, Mrs. Riggs.
Resolution for American Education Week, November 15th through the 19th, 2021. Whereas, November 15th through 19th, 2021 is recognized as the hundredth Annual American Rev- Education Week by the National Education Association to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring every child receives a quality education. And whereas, the creation of this week has encouraged resolutions across the country to help encourage national support of public education. And whereas, American Education Week is the celebration of distinguished individuals critical to the success of public education for the nation's nearly fifty million K through TELSS students. And whereas, the National Education Association calls for a week to be observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And whereas, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is focused on encouraging and recognizing the support for public education. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is committed to its relationships with the community and stakeholders through compass to 2025. To increase public support and involvement in education, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designates the week of November 15th through the 19th, 2021 as American Education Week in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this ninth day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs. And our fir- fourth and final resolution, Mrs. Holtz.
Resolution for National School Psychology Week, November 8th through the 12th, 2021. Whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists support the development of academic and social-emotional skills for all students, thus allowing each student to reach their full potential. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists are valuable members of the multidisciplinary teams serving schools, providing a wide range of services to students, parents, and staff. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists are actively committed to helping students recognize their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to their development and their mental wellness. And whereas, the City of Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and socially-emotional growth of their children. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists work with teachers and other educators to help in meeting the individual needs of the students. And whereas, Virginia Beach City Public School Psychologists use their expertise in child development, mental health, community resources, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to su- to support educational success. Whereas, with this shared approach to supporting student learning and socially-emotional growth, psychologists are considering, are considered an integral, integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success and wellness in school life. Now therefore be it resolved that the city board, that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach recognized the second full week of November 2021 as National School Psychology Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this ninth day of November 2021. day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz. So that represents our full consent agenda, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mrs. Anderson and a second, Mrs. Franklin, okay? All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote, motion passed.
There's only, there's only 10. What do you mean? Oh, right here? Okay, thank you. All right, action portion of the agenda, beginning with the Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments, Motion to Approve.
Don't we have other stuff on the consent agenda that we didn't? We're good to go? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, back to Action and Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments, Motion to Approve.
I thought I was, yeah.
Mrs. Anderson, a second, Mrs. Felton, okay, discussion? All right, hearing done, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote, the motion passed.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, do you have any announcements for us tonight? Okay. So that brings us to lacrosse, high school activity addition. So to open up discussion, a motion to approve. Mrs. Melnick, and a second, Mrs. Wiens, all right. Discussion, and do we have Mr. Rhodes present, or who's, okay?
So welcome, Mr. Rhodes.
Chairman Ry, Vice Chairman Melnick, School Board members, Dr. Spence. At the last meeting, I made a presentation recommending that the School Board consider adopting lacrosse with a target date of 2023 as a varsity sport in our high schools. And so I'm here this evening to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for providing that context. So we have Mrs. Franklin, then Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you, first of all, for bringing this to us. And I, let me just say for the record that I really appreciate everybody's input, their passion and pleas, especially from the students, and everybody who has taken the time to speak to me about this, because I have to tell you, initially, my gut reaction was, it's a lot of money. The upfront cost and the recurring cost every year really did concern me, especially in a time where we have some needs. But I have to say that all of the discussion, and again, particularly by the students, really has swayed my opinion. I really do believe that this is great for students, for schools, the ability for them to get scholarships, you know, both high school. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody who is willing to provide their input or consent for giving me some reassurance and off budget, piece of that, and Dr. Merrill percent. So thank you to everybody. I just wanted to acknowledge everyone who provided some input to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Manning.
So at last, at our last meeting, one of the things that was brought up was helmets for the, for the girls, ladies, and I'd like to know where we are with that.
We have researched the cost on that. We feel like that it would be in the $55,000 range. We know that there is the state of Florida that's mandated it. It's not mandatory in Virginia, but from what we understand, the momentum is headed in that direction. There isn't a rule that would prevent us from doing it, but we would be probably the only school division in the state that would be wearing helmets.
Did you say 55,000 or 5,000?
I said 55,000.
55? For helmets for girls?
For all the schools, yes, ma'am. They're about $200 each, so, yes, ma'am. So it's something that we certainly are open to, and, but it's not required in Virginia right now.
Okay, so the total cost currently is how much to start this?
To start lacrosse?
Yeah.
It would be in the $850,000 to $900,000 range.
Okay. So if we, if we ask that you investigate further, maybe, into seeing if you can get helmets for, I just, I just, I really think the puck, I mean, the ball that they use is extremely hard. It's made of wood, I believe. Is that correct?
No, it's a hard rubber.
But it's a very hard rubber, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So if anybody gets hit in the head, I just wonder if we should just, if we're gonna do it, we should, maybe we should just think about doing it the right way. I, you know, I just, that's where I'm at, and I'm very concerned about a head injury, and then we look back on it and we lose even one life. Is 55,000 the cost for one life? Is it worth, I mean?
Certainly not.
You see where I'm going? So I like the idea of doing this. I like the idea of having lacrosse. I've been pushing for it for a couple of years myself, but I would really like to delve into the possibility of getting, looking into helmets, and maybe we can push for it in Virginia, because the rest of, I mean, maybe we would be the only one in the state, but.
I did have a discussion with a representative from the Virginia High School League who felt like it is something that eventually will come in and be mandatory. Like I said, that's where the momentum's heading. I just don't know how quickly, but.
We could be a leader. I mean, we've been a leader in other areas in the state, so that's just my suggestion. I, I'm not going to vote against this. I just would like the administration to really consider going ahead and stepping forward and finding the money to, if you're gonna do it, do it right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Wiens.
So this has been a long conversation. I know that this was a topic even before I was on the board five years ago. I think that this is something that has been well thought out and well planned out, so I appreciate your leadership in that and, I mean, all the principals. I know that they've been instrumental in providing feedback, and all the parents. I mean, we've, I've heard from parents throughout the entire city, and, and you know, I took it all in, because I was concerned about the cost as well, but I do think it's important. And my question is, we have, we've already done two turf fields, correct? Completed?
We've got three right now that are completed. Two more that are on the books to be done as soon as the football season ends this year. So we'll have five.
So we'll, so how many, will, will we have lacrosse at all high schools?
That's, yes, ma'am, it would be, it would come in at all 11 high schools.
So will they be sharing fields, or are they gonna just be utilizing the regular field?
Well, it depends on the school and how much field space they have at the school. I think one of the things that was important for us was to have as many turf fields as possible. One of the things that we were hearing is a concern from Landscape Services was to have a soccer and lacrosse season at the same time on the stadium field. So I think that schools are gonna do all they can to try and stay off their grass stadium field as much as possible. Those schools that have a turf, synthetic turf stadium field, then they will be able to have soccer practices and lacrosse practices in shifts. I'm sure they'll do some practices off of the field, too, for convenience purposes. But yeah, it just depends on the school and how much land they have, really.
So, I mean, could it, could it be that we have schools playing games at another school that already has a turf field? Is that part of the plan?
Well, we're thinking that, right now, we've had a traditional soccer schedule set up where we play on Tuesdays and Fridays. And so we would mirror that soccer schedule with lacrosse, so that when the soccer team, the varsity teams are away, the boys and girls teams are away, the lacrosse teams would play at home against the same opponent. And so that way, we don't have to worry about conflicting with soccer competitions at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Wiens, you're on.
Yes, it has been a long conversation and a lot of community input, and it's all great. Kind of piggybacking on the helmet thing, and maybe we can hear from the expert here about lacrosse. So is there any, so if you don't mandate it, though, are you allowed to wear a helmet if you want to? Because some sports have restrictions where you can only wear, you know, the designated uniform or use certain type of equipment. But could I wear a helmet if I wanted to?
I need to find the answer to that question, because in some cases, if, if one team is wearing them and the other team isn't, then that could be an issue. We would be playing most of our games against ourselves, but when we get to postseason play, that wouldn't be the case. It's possible we might also play a private school. So that's a question that I haven't gotten the answer to, but I would need to look into.
Okay, and is there anything that would cause a player not to be able to perform at their optimum if they had a helmet on? If she had a helmet on? I asked this because you, I don't know if y'all remember, that years and years and years and years and years ago, we tried to get mouth guards for soccer players, because there had been some bad injuries, one being my daughter, who lost her three front teeth in a soccer injury. And I did not want that to happen to another parent, because we had nine root canals and they finally had to pull the teeth out. And we got such pushback from the community, the parents saying, no, I am not gonna make my child wear a mouth guard, because that will make them run slower. And I would, you know, I was just like, oh, my goodness. And Dr. Merrill just finally said, we can't move forward to this, because there was so much backlash from the community, saying that'll, you know, make my player not as good by wearing a mouth guard. I was so shocked. I'm like, so that's my question. Before we go into that, do you think there's any parental, like, oh, no, I'm not gonna wear a helmet?
The boys wear helmets, and so if the boys can wear helmets, I don't know why it would be different for the girls.
I would think so. I mean, I was shocked. I was shocked. And I think it's before any of y'all were on the board, but I was very shocked at that as well. I don't think we have mouth guards still for soccer. Maybe that'll be our next thing, after we get the helmets. Maybe we'll do it one, helmet, mouth guard.
One at a time.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's good. I want to come out and learn about lacrosse. I am very, I hate to say it, but I'm very ignorant on that sport, but I want to learn about it. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And I won't take long, because I don't want to beat the dead horse with the helmet thing, but I do want to make sure that it's understood that I am supportive of lacrosse coming in as a varsity sport, but I do feel like if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right, and that means at least having the option for our girls to wear the helmets. Really, when you said that Florida is the only place that we're aware of that is mandating it, it made me really question, do they have different rules for their girls there? Because if not, Florida is mandating children to wear something, maybe we really need to take a harder look at it. But, um, yeah, maybe they know something that we don't, but I do feel like we need to do it, we need to do it right. If we're gonna protect our boys, we need to protect our girls equitably, so that's it.
Well, one advantage to this being not until 2023, though I realize that's spring, which is actually only 18 months away, and you still need planning, but, but essentially, there's still a good 12 months, I think, to monitor, to advocate as far as the safety issues. So I'm comfortable with having a year, you know, for those who say, well, maybe we need to put out feelers and see if we want to initiate something here.
We definitely hear your concerns, and we will, we will explore them, and obviously, we've got to play within the rules, but we will explore them to the greatest degree.
And I think a good place to start with is our present lacrosse female coaches, you know, as a starting point. So I just wanted to comment about the, again, the sustained commitment of this lacrosse community. And it's about a decade ago that there were three high schools that had club teams, and then fast, like, forward to the past half dozen years, and at the six-year point, when this group, they were, they were kind of in limbo, and they just needed a roadmap, you know, and so we produced that for them. There is a, a club, whatever the name of the form is, it's a step-by-step roadmap of what you need to do. And they needed to get at least a majority of the high schools. So, so that was the first goal, to get to, you know, from three schools to six or seven, and then, of course, to add on from there, where it's at, I think, nine or 10 now, with some, depending on the combination. But other things had to happen. We had reached an impasse at a certain point where field capacity was an issue, and it's been noted that the turf fields have addressed that, and it was emphasized at the time that other sports would benefit from that as well. And then getting the approval of the Principals League in September was another huge leap, and then having these, the chance for these board discussions now. And through it all, I think it's just a testimony to the parents and the coaches who have stuck with this program, but not just them alone, but their partnership with the schools, with the division, and a really fine example of family-school partnership. And that's, that's what it took to get to this point, too. And I'll also add that many of these volunteers, what's impressed me is their kids have graduated, and that they stick it out, you know, and some have had kids out for five years already, and yet they continue to coach or to manage the league or to do any one of these other number of positions. So again, my thanks to the staff for the support along the way to the teams, not just to the teams, but so that the principals, too, all understood, because in fairness to them, they didn't know what was expected of them. So that's why it really was a team effort the whole way.
And Madam Chair, we don't, we don't typically talk about things we do like that, but I just want to thank you for your, your behind-the-scenes quiet leadership on this, because you were, you were with those parents and those coaches and those students from the very beginning, and so thank you for that, especially since you did it so quietly. Thank you.
Well, now I'll have to feel compelled to also mention Mr. Edwards, our previous colleague and previous chair, as being an early champion, too. So, thank you. Okay, anything else before we vote? All right, then, all in favor of adding lacrosse as a VHSL high school varsity sport in Virginia Beach, please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote, the motion did pass.
Well, thank you all. Well, we know there's a lot of happy lacrosse parents and coaches out there tonight. Okay. Action item C, renaming of the school building known unofficially as Old Kellum. Before we open up for discussion, motion to approve? Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Melnick. So who's going to, who's presenting this to us tonight?
So it's pretty straightforward, Old Kellum, which sometimes is now referred as Old Princess Anne Middle School. It becomes confusing for everybody, including first responders, if they need to go. It also becomes confusing for those that need to do it, so why the proposal's on the table to change it to Holland Road Annex? Holland Road Annex.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick.
So, y'all, this is my neighborhood, and I will tell you, it is incredibly confusing. Old Kellum, Princess Anne, nobody knows, and now that we really do have a Kellum and a Princess Anne, it really does need the distinction of a different name, and so please help my neighborhood by approving the change of this, this name.
Yeah, we should add, if it becomes a filler school again, there would be, it would possibly be temporarily coming back to us for another temporary name change, which is the point of calling it an annex right now.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, can you also mention there are some distribution issues?
Yeah, so anytime that you need to be able to get stuff somewhere or communicates to somebody to go somewhere, again, it just becomes confusing. So giving it one name that everybody can rely upon, that's the, that's the benefit of what we're proposing to you. And obviously, if we were, if and when we were to put another school in there, we would obviously name it appropriately at that time.
Any other, any other, any questions? All right, then, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote, the.
The motion did pass.
Thank you. So now we welcome Ms. Crystal Pate for our budget fiscal year 2021 resolution regarding reversion in revenue actual over/under budget funds. So I will, we'll start this with Mrs. Melnick reading the resolution to then entertain a motion and a second for discussion.
Okay. Whereas on September 28th, 2021, the school board was presented with a summary of the unaudited financial statements for fiscal year 2020-21, year ending June 30th, 2021, showing the reversion amount to the city's general fund. And whereas the amount of fiscal year 2020-2021 school operating reversion funds available, excluding revenues over/under budget, is $14,463,778. And whereas $10,131,688 came in as additional revenue over the appropriated budget, increasing the school operating reversion amount to $24,595,466. And whereas $401,878 reverted from the athletics fund and $711,334 reverted from the Green Run Collegiate Charter School Fund. And whereas the estimated total amount available for reappropriation is $25,708,678. And whereas the city is currently indicating a fiscal year 2020-2021 revenue actual over budget of $29,230,144 based on the revenue sharing formula. And whereas the net reversion funding available for reappropriation is $54,938,822. And whereas the administration recommends the following for the available funds in the amount of $54,938,822. $11 million to be reappropriated to the school reserve special revenue fund to be set aside for use in the fiscal year 22-23 capital improvement program. $34,432,182 to be reappropriated to the CIP fund for Project 1-017, renovation and replacement grounds, three synthetic turf at Kempsville High School and Ocean Lakes High School, $3,500,000. Project 1-018, renovation and replacement of HVAC 3, Project 1-020, renovation and replacement various 3, locker removal renovation at First Colonial High School and classroom/furniture replacement at various schools, $6,250,000. Project 1-022, elementary school playground equipment replacement, $1 million. Project 1-026, Lynn Haven Middle School expansion, achievable dream, $1,100,000. Project 1-028, Betty F. Williams Bayside 6th, grades 4 through 6, replacement, $7,500,000. Project 1-030, replacement payroll system, $4,382,407. Project 1-031, school bus and fleet replacement, $7,713,000. $900,000 to be reappropriated to the athletics fund, 204 startup costs for lacrosse program. $8,606,640 to be reappropriated to the school operating fund for 1154. Access layer switches and points, $1,221,000. Interactive whiteboard replacements, $882,000. Electric, electronic perimeter access control doors, $645,000. Data center firewall upgrade, $566,125. Instructional supplies, $151,515. Contracted services to pressure wash building exteriors and courtyards, $130,000. Maintenance and repair projects and equipment, $5,010,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach approves the recommended use of the fiscal year 2020-21 reversion and revenue sharing formula reconciliation funds as presented by the administration. And be it further resolved that the school board requests that the city council approve the reappropriation of fiscal year 2020-21 reversion and revenue sharing formula reconciliation funds shown above. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. And the clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of city council, the city manager, and the city clerk, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this ninth day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. Motion to approve? Mrs. Riggs, a second, Mrs. Holtz. All right, discussion. Miss, before we proceed, Ms. Pate, do you have anything new or, or that you want to share or anything to repeat from last week that you feel bears repeating?
I think one of the things we'd like to share is that this is in line, in align with how city council would like to see us use these reappropriated funds as for our capital improvement program. So we do, to make these recommendations to try and stay in line with that. We also know that the amount that's really out of our appropriated operating budget, which is like 14, a little over $14 million, that was only like 1 and 1/2% of our approved budget. So we cut it pretty close that time when we did our spending. So a big portion of that money is from our revenue sharing formula reconciliation with the city.
All right, who wants to begin? And thank you for that. Mrs. Anderson.
So, um, would you? Okay, I'll, I'll just tell you that I heard that a city council person spoke to a group of people this past weekend and suggested that Betty F. Williams 6th grade campus, or Betty F. Williams Bayside 6th grade campus, that the money is already appropriated for that and that we're asking for double that amount now. So could you tell me how that, if that, is there any truth to that?
No, I think that's part of what was in this unsolicited proposal and we're just trying to get ahead of that. So that, if we put it on there, that the funds aren't completely appropriated.
They're not really appropriated yet. Because he, he's telling public, he's telling the public that the funds are already there. And I said he, but it is, it is a he that, that's been telling that. So I, I just don't understand where, where a city council person is getting this information that indicates that.
So the, that particular project in the capital program that was adopted by council in May is in the six-year window. But there are no appropriations to date. So it is projected to be funded.
No appropriations.
There are no appropriations to date, no ma'am. And so this $7.5 million would put those appropriations in the project. That's the only funding that would be in that, that particular project.
I see. Okay, so he was, that particular council member was wrong in stating that that was already appropriated.
There's a difference between appropriation and money that's in this, that's projected to be in the six-year program. Only, only the appropriations that are shown in year one are actually appropriations that we have the authority to spend.
It, it, I mean, a couple of thoughts to share. So it can be a little confusing if you look at our CIP, our six-year CIP, when you look at the document itself and you look at the projects. It, it'll say, you know, money, I mean, funding for it. And it'll say, you know, fully funded. And you'll see that. And so that can be confusing. It's projected to be fully funded within the six-year CIP. It doesn't mean the money's been appropriated.
That's a big difference.
So I think that can be a little confusing. It's, it's helpful to try to consistently come back and repeat things about the, about the CIP and the reversion. In fact, there was a comment made earlier about the $11 million in this reversion that is to be allocated to the CIP. And there was a question about, I think there was some confusion about that. If you go back and you look in the CIP document and you look at the revenue summary, you'll see reversion funds being put into the CIP over the six years. And that's what that $11 million is. It's, it is a follow-through on the commitment to put $11 million into the CIP as a part of that six-year project.
So this would just help us get ahead of it, right?
And that is different than the reserve funds that are set aside to help us offset the, any, any anticipated losses in the operating budget of about $3.5 million. A little bit, that's different than the money that in the CIP we indicated would be allocated out of reversions for the purpose of construction.
So then would it be appropriate to say that this is just going to help us get a little bit ahead of, of what's appropriate?
That's the idea. And I think that, as you heard Crystal talk about, and she can talk about it better than I can. But as you all know, there's a RFP out on a, on a PPEA that you all approved to send out for RFP. And that this project is inside of that. And so this is an effort to get that funding secured ahead of that, whether or not that happens. And either way, then that money will be secured for that project. And then that'll, that'll either be at the end of six years or within a different window, depending on what happens with that PPE.
One other, not to belabor the point, but this is cash. So it's, it's equivalent to pay-go. So it's not debt. And so that's also a good thing when you're funding projects. You're using, you're using cash and you're not borrowing.
So I would just suggest that when this is, when we, when we give this to city council, we, we emphasize the fact that this is cash. It's, it's, it's pay-go, you know? It's, we're, we're not asking for a, a loan of any type. This is cash that we can actually put toward it. So I, I, I think we need to emphasize that to city council so that we don't have somebody sitting there on councils giving people the wrong impression of what we're doing with this money. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mrs. Melnick and then Mrs. Williams.
So, Ms. Pate, we had a citizen tonight talk about the retention of teachers. And I wish it were as easy as a dollar figure in, in some reversion money that we could attract and retain teachers. And I understood exactly what he was saying. And I wish it were that easy. We, we have a much larger problem. And I think we all understand that, that this is a national problem. And it's not going to be solved in one, in one budget cycle here. And it, quite frankly, the larger dollar amounts for teacher pay increases have to come from the state. As we all know, we have 2% discretionary spending, which doesn't leave us a lot of room for teacher pay raises, not significant teacher pay raises. And so I'm anxious for that. Could you maybe, for that citizen, address the bus, the bus replace, replacement and what, what that cycle is and how behind we are?
Sure. And just let me first address the, the retention and recruitment incentives. So we found that we are having serious frequent discussions now regarding that process. Looking at our lowest-paid employees, our critical shortage groups, coming up with those, that information and that cost and the proper funding sources to address that. It was just not, at the time, ready to be put into this reversion figure. But that is not lost on any of us. And we are seriously having those discussions and working those numbers and deciding where that, that's going to come from. And that will be something, will be shared once final discussions are completed.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
As far as the school bus and white fleet replacement, obviously, there's pros to actually having a replacement cycle on vehicles. I mean, it's just even if we are, we are still traveling the city and transporting students, we still have wear and tear on our buses. Some of them are older. We don't want to get behind on that if we don't have to. The other thing is why we've actually put it into a CIP actual project number instead of actually every year taking reversion if we have it and trying to chip away at that is, and this is Mr. Arnold's suggestion, which was a great one, is the fact that we have a supply chain demand problem. And so we go and put it in reversion and then we can't get those vehicles because there's, they're just not there. I mean, literally, I just bought a new car and there was like no, nothing on the lot hardly. So the idea is to be able to put that in a project of CIP and build that money so that when those vehicles are ready or those buses are ready to be purchased, we have those funds available and we're not constricted by a fiscal year appropriation.
Thank you. And my other question is about legal services and the dollar figure associated with that. So it's not on here. Is that because we have it budgeted?
Yeah, well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't put that into a reversion? Because it's just another reminder, these are one-time dollars?
No, I know, but we have a one-time, we have a one-time with this. And that is the purchase of the new software.
That, that number's going to be small enough that we can absorb that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Williams.
And I just finished, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams, just real fast to, to just finish on the bus conversation, that the buses are not new buses in addition to the existing fleet. So it's not new drivers that we would be looking for, for those buses. These are replacement buses for vehicles that are 12 to 15 years old. And so these would be driven by our existing drivers who, who I think value and appreciate the opportunity to get out of those 15-year-old buses and into a vehicle that's a little more roadworthy.
Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, I mean, I know we have to always save about 2%. And so this was actually a little bit short of that, you know, for reversion, you know, by law. And to make sure that we don't get in any big-time trouble, we need to always keep that. And I know that one-time money normally goes to CIP and city council likes that. But I still have major heartburn that nothing in all this money has gone for our crucial problem now, which is bus driver shortage, teacher shortage, substitute shortage. I mean, and I, and I know, and I know, Crystal, you just said, well, you know, that's not lost, but we couldn't get it all in this one. And, and, and that's great, but we could have started somewhere with this. This is a boatload of money. And nothing, I mean, I, I haven't heard, I mean, $6.5 million for classroom furniture. I mean, is the classroom furniture falling apart? You know, maybe so. I don't know. I mean, and we could pick every line, but not, for nothing to be in here for what we have heard for months and months and months and months and months and months. Not enough substitutes. Get something incentive, incentive, incentives to get retired teachers to come substitute. Bonuses, bonuses. Nothing for teachers, and nothing for bus driver shortage. That just hurts. It sends, it sends a really terrible message also. The optics, the optics don't, aren't very good.
So could one of you speak to possible other sources?
Help me understand that. Because I, with this much money and not any of it going for that shortage. And I know we can't solve the teacher shortage in one budget cycle, of course. Of course, we can't. But we could start with something when we have this much money. So I, I don't understand.
So, yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So we are, as, as has been discussed, we have been actively trying to put together the numbers that would make sense in terms of something to bring to you all and say, this is what we think we're going to do. From a compensation perspective, we're focused very carefully on the areas where our lowest wage earners, and that's an area where we see a lot of turnover. And so trying to look there at specifically retention incentives. We're also looking at ways that we can appropriately compensate in some other areas. You, you mentioned our substitutes. So looking at, how can we become a little bit more competitive there to keep our substitutes on board? And we're looking at ways we can look at some of our other hard-to-staff positions to provide incentives for those. We have, we, we will be coming back to, I think our timeframe, frankly, is the next board meeting to come back to you to talk about that. And confident that we have the funding mechanisms identified between our CARES funding and ESAR funds and existing operating dollars that are created because of some of the vacancies that we have right now to be able to bring you a full proposal. So it shouldn't be an optics issue here, understanding that we'll bring you a full proposal for how we think we can address that by our next board meeting.
So, so what happens, okay, with the, with the timeframe on this resolution? Does it have to be voted on tonight? Is that, is that just a deadline that we cannot miss tonight?
I think we have some time, not a lot, a lot. It has to be, be sent to the city council and then they have to go through their, their process on their side.
I mean, do you see, Dr. Spence? I mean, because, because I'm, I'm hearing, you know, we're going to come with this plan just two weeks away. It would have been nice if this plan was kind of with this plan also, unless you're telling me we got it covered, we got enough to really help with the retention.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. I thought that's why I signaled. Yes, ma'am. I believe we will have the money that we need in order to appropriately address some of those compensation issues. I believe we will have the money that we need in order to appropriately address some of those compensation issues, and that we've been working to identify the funds for that. We'll have that for you in two weeks. There are a lot of moving parts here. I apologize if that didn't align to the reversion resolution, but, you know, there's just a lot of conversations that need to be had to get those things identified.
Yeah, I just wish that we would have had it, yes, that it would have been together, and then we could have said, oh, well, wait, we really want, you know, 10 more million with that, or whatever. And so it's really hard with not having that conversation or that information until two weeks from now. Thank you.
But in fairness, Mrs. Weems, when we talked to the city about this before, the city said, well, we want to be able to give our employees incentives and raises also, but we don't have the money to do that either. And so I think it's fair to wait the two weeks. We've had this back and forth, and it's been going on for quite some time.
Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Weems. A couple of months ago, you know, I presented the idea of signing bonuses for drivers, you know, if they stay with us for a certain period of time, trying to recruit those drivers. I asked for a plan, and I'm very disappointed that it's not in this. I think that when we're voting on this, we're telling the public what our priorities are. We're telling our employees what our priorities are. And our priorities need to be our staffing shortages right now. And we're getting, you know, messages from parents saying that kids are sitting in the aisles of the school bus. I mean, we've got to address that problem. And I hear you, Dr. Spence, that that's coming, but I've asked for this over and over again, and I'm very disappointed it's not in this, because this should be the priority that we're seeing here right now, and I can't support it.
Well, I do thank the superintendent for the assurance that there is these other sources of funding, and, you know, I can't dispute that the timing could have been better. And I just want to point out for the public, the total here, it comes down to the three levels of government, local, state, and federal, all underestimated revenue, and it was the responsible thing to do in the midst of a pandemic. So the good news is that, you know, the three levels wound up being too conservative, but nobody knew it at the time. So I think, you know, if you're entertaining questions from the public, that's just an important thing to point out. And we have nothing to be defensive about. I mean, the sales tax came in 5,000 over budget, the federal money 5,000 over budget, and the revenue-sharing formula, and City Council benefited equally, if not more, was, you know, the 29 million. So that's just helpful to share.
Mrs. Weems.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I'm, yeah, this money was unanticipated, so, you know, I'm not harping on the money because I know we have to save some, we do have to put some in CIP, and it was unanticipated because of, like you said, conservative estimations beforehand during the pandemic. So I know that, but I am just not pleased that some of this unanticipated, what some public would say is a windfall of money, that none of it was going for the staffing shortages, but yeah.
And to be clear, I was keeping in mind constituents we've heard from via email and some I've personally heard from, that, so I think that they weren't fully aware of the difference sources of this money and how it totaled and got to the way it did.
And Mrs. Franklin.
Well, I just had a question. So if Ms. Pate had mentioned that we might have, do we have two weeks just to be able?
I need to double-check the City Council's, I mean, on there, but I believe it might be tight. We'd have to come back quickly.
Yeah, Mrs. Weems.
I'd like to make the motion that we suspend this vote for two more weeks till we can get all the information for what Dr. Spence and Ms. Pate have in mind of the other sources to take care of this staffing issue, and so we can combine and look at the whole picture at once.
I second.
So how did we come up with this timeline, since this is open for discussion now?
The timeline is when we get finalized numbers, and then we try to get it before the board and information. Normally, we go all at one time. Usually, we go workshop, information, action, all in one time. This time, it was split up some. We just need to verify the date for City Council, and they will likely work with us on that piece. It's not like we've ever not gone on a later date.
I have to admit, I'm torn, because I don't think it sends a good signal to send us, you know, if this is going to wind up being a really split vote over to City Council, because they won't necessarily know the rationale behind the split vote. We got burned with that once way back when with kindergarten, where it was, you know, the no vote didn't mean no about full-day kindergarten. It just meant, you know, we're going to go the full speed or half at a time.
Ms. Owens.
I just wanted to, I guess, try and get some additional clarification if the vote is held off until, I guess, this next two weeks, and we're right before Thanksgiving at that point, like right before Thanksgiving. Our division is closed the following day. Where that really puts us in terms of actually getting something over to City Council? Are we now asking employees to work through a holiday to get things done? Like, what does that really look like and mean for us as far as getting things to City Council?
Yeah, well, again, I know there's a December 7th date for City Council, so they have some things going on there. We've worked a lot of numbers over the last week or so, so we probably have some numbers if we set and make that decision and bring it back to you.
Ms. Franklin.
So just out of curiosity, is there a possibility, and I'm asking this question, is there a possibility that once you find out that information, that we could reconvene for a vote on that?
You were reading my mind, not that I were looking, Ms. Anderson.
So you're reading my mind, too, because I was wondering if it might be possible, Dr. Spence, would you have it in a week if we called a special meeting next week for the purpose of just this discussion, for this and also for the discussion of what you might bring to us? Not on Tuesday.
I think the short answer is we could try. I appreciate the impassioned plea for a response to, for example, you know, hiring incentives, sign-on bonuses, and so we talked about that. I'm just going to give you an example of why this is so complicated. And we looked at other places that had done it and really backfired on them because hiring bonuses actually turn people off who've been working for you and have been loyal to you for a long time. So then we started talking about, well, there are some other ways we could handle that, and so we've signaled that we were going to begin with a referral program, and so that's in our conversation that we want to bring to you and what we think the cost of that will be. We, then, as we started talking about that, we started, because this was essentially beginning the conversation, was a bus-driver-centric conversation. Then all of these other things started cropping up that you've been hearing about and that we've been talking about in terms of people and other shortages that we're having in some of the areas that people are feeling some anxiety. And so then we started talking as a team about how do we do that? So this has been an ongoing, complicated, multiple-moving-parts conversation. And I would love to say, to now get to your answer, I would love to say to you, yep, by next week, I've got it for you. So I need to meet with my team and confer, because as of yesterday, our thought was we could probably get this solidified in about two weeks and understand that that requires some work with the grants and that that takes a little bit of time, so.
I was actually just referring to, did you know, that we had a much clearer vision of the timeline? And that's kind of what I was wondering if we could push it, and so you had an answer from City Council.
And, but it still goes back to what Dr. Spence just said, is that we need to be able to solidify those numbers and the groups of people we'll be working with because of the complications that go along with the whole process. So just, I'm just laying that back out there, just.
Operationally, it's quite complicated when you start talking about different incentives, different pay, because you have to change your payroll systems. There's just a lot that you have to do. And I'm not sort of trying to make excuses, but I'm just trying to tell you that this has not been a conversation that just started. This has been a conversation that's been going on for months, and every time you sort of fold out one wrinkle, another wrinkle, it's sort of that carpet that won't go down at the end. You push it down, and then it pops back up. And we really are, I think, approaching a place where we've got some consensus among the senior leadership. The finance team is on board, and we think we're now in the right direction. And so I think we're getting close. I just can't give you the precise day, but, and then again, we heard from the city, and then they said, well, we need it by this day, and then we had to call a special meeting. What I'm saying is I'm not sure we'd have those numbers in front of you. What I am telling you is we have a proposal in mind to bring to you, and I want to bring you numbers that we can't, you know, then back up. And I think it's good. I think the conversation has been really robust amongst senior leadership about their departments and what we need, and that's been driven by things we've heard from our teacher assembly, things we've heard from our principals, from other work groups. So I think it's a really good, robust conversation. I'm disappointed that that's signaling somehow that we don't make this a priority, because we have, but I certainly understand the sort of spoken-to optics of it. But, you know, I think our staff and what we do for them is a priority, and will continue to be that way. And you have in front of you, and so not, let me also be clear, we can delay this two weeks. We'll figure out how to make it work. This isn't like a hill for us to dial on, but I'm trying to help you understand the complexities of the other issue. And you have a very thoughtful, needed reversion resolution in front of you. So the other part that I worry about a little bit is saying that these things aren't important. You know, it's not, sometimes we get into like either-or prioritization. These are all things that have to happen. There are significant maintenance issues in our buildings, as you are well aware. And for years, we've used reversion to address those issues and bus issues and other things. And so I want to make sure that the opposite doesn't happen, that we, that by kind of saying this isn't an appropriately prioritized reversion, that we send messages that these things don't matter, because these also matter significantly. And I know it's just a function of putting one of having a good conversation about it. So we can wait a week, or two weeks, if need be, and we can come back, and hopefully, we will have good numbers for you by then on how we propose to approach incentive and retention and compensation issues in the short term. I mean, there are much longer-term compensation issues to Mrs. Melnick's earlier point.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Yep, just very briefly, wanted to ask my colleagues to, whenever it is that we do vote on this, whether this is tonight or in two weeks, for us to just be mindful that part of the vote that we just took moments ago for lacrosse was kind of, at least for me, based on the understanding that we knew where that money was coming from. And so when we talk all the time about unfunded mandates and things that have been agreed upon and put on, we just voted to do a varsity sport, and there's the money in this reversion. And so to vote for the sport and then vote against the reversion where the money is coming from is something that I just want us to be mindful about, how that's going to happen, what that's going to mean.
I agree. I had my name here, but I took it back, just because I don't want to repeat what Dr. Spence says, but I'm going to repeat what Dr. Spence said. We, these are some serious capital improvement projects we have sitting in front of us, and we really can't ignore them, and I don't want to be in a place, I mean, how many times did we see Farrell standing right there saying, we're so behind with our buses, we're so behind with this, we have this we need to do, and we have the opportunity to chip away at some of these things? And as Mrs. Rye said, you know, we have an assurance from Dr. Spence, and Ms. Pate has been nodding her head, you know, I see other senior staff members nodding their head that these are discussions that they're having and that there are moving parts, and, you know, we just, we know, you know, we're being assured that that's coming, but in the meantime, is there some significant projects that we need to really also be mindful of?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Mrs. Weems, I understand where you're coming from, that you'd like to have this delayed so that we can basically let people know that we value our employees and we need to have incentives for them and bonuses, et cetera, as well as do this. But I see this as something that we need to go ahead and take care of tonight and let City Council know, and I'm hoping that the majority of us will approve this tonight, because I feel like this is, it's not something that's not important either. This is just as important as well. It doesn't weigh more than our employees or bonuses for our employees. I'm looking forward to giving our employees something to look forward to, but Dr. Spence has assured us that he's got, he has a plan coming forward, and I look forward to hearing about that in two weeks. But I'd also like to move forward with this tonight. And normally, I mean, if he said he could do it, and we could have a special meeting next Tuesday to approve all of this, I'd be willing to go for that, but I'm not sure he could be ready in a week. So therefore, I think I'd rather go ahead and approve this part tonight and look forward to what he's bringing to us in two weeks. And I'd like the public to know that, you know, that we all look forward to that. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Weems.
I do agree with what Ms. Owens said about just discussing lacrosse, but that's about $1 million out of it. This is 54 million. We just heard from Dr. Spence and from Ms. Pate that we could revisit this in two weeks, and if we're hearing about what we're going to do for our staff and this at the same time, I think that that would be better. If we can vote on this in two weeks at the next meeting, and we're hearing that it's not a problem to do that, then I think that we should table this for two weeks. I don't see why it would be a problem.
Okay, Mrs. Weems.
Yeah, just quickly before we vote, to clarify, if Phil Hawke would have been 54 million, I mean, lacrosse would have been 54 million, I wouldn't have voted for it. So 900,000 is not 54 million, but, okay, we're ready. Understand?
Okay, so we're going to have an up or down vote on this, and if it passes, it does, and if it doesn't, it means we'll revisit it in two weeks. Is that correct?
Aren't we voting on the substitute motion to?
We are voting on the substitute motion that Ms. Weems made is on the floor. It was seconded in by Mrs. Manning. Her motion was to put the reversion back for two weeks, to come back for a vote on the November 23rd meeting.
And the understanding is that we should be, as best as we know, we'd be okay on the City Council front with the delay?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I just.
Then we have a special meeting.
It sounds like it'll be final City Council, it's just if Dr. Spence can get us this done.
All right. So please repeat, whoever made the motion, just please repeat it for the record.
I made the substitute motion that we would delay this vote until two weeks so that we can get Dr. Spence's other plans for spending money for these shortages and this all at one time.
Okay, so everybody's clear on what we're voting on? All in favor?
Is this with the understanding that if we hear from City Council they need it sooner, then we're going to have to call a special meeting?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I understand. I just need to be clear, because I don't want to be caught where we.
Okay, so all in favor of the two-week delay, show a raised hand, please.
We have nine ayes.
All opposed, please show a raised hand.
And we have two nays with Ms. Melnick and Ms. Holt, so. And we have two nays with Ms. Melnick and Ms. Holt, so the sub-motion did pass.
Okay. Committee reports. Who would like to report first before we get back to our workshop item? Mrs. Franklin.
So we had a CAC meeting this past week, and I always learn something every time I am part of this group and Dr. DeRice actually heads up. And it's just amazing, all the great things that we are offering that I had no idea, even as a parent.
Could you qualify for the public, the committee? You use the acronym.
Are you on the gifted advisor? Yes, gifted advisor, many, thank you. But anyway, so the important thing is, and I really do want to get more specific, and I left my notes in the car, but they have, we have so many summer program offerings right now for, that you can apply for, to go to camps for arts and engineering and, you know, STEM. And I just want to make sure that all parents are aware to be looking at that, especially at the high school level, for all the different opportunities that your kids might be, you know, interested in and apply for. So I am actually going to be much more prepared next time because I definitely want to get that information out there. But I just wanted to reiterate how great that they are doing and all the amazing programs that we do offer here that a lot of people are probably not even aware of. So I am going to be getting that information out in much more detail later. But I just wanted to make sure that if they're interested, that they do take a look at that and talk to their schools about these summer offerings and the camps that are available.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
And this isn't officially a committee per se, but I just wanted to share that the Mental Health Task Force is coming back together for the next, our first meeting will be November 30th from 1:00 to 2:30. And then we have four meetings total scheduled to just continue those discussions and that work that we're doing. And that's myself and colleague Carolyn Williams that will be attending those. So I'm looking forward to continuing that work with the community partners. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Felton.
Yeah, a couple of times a year, as you may know, the Special Educational Advisory Committee has a nightly meeting so that working folks can attend. And so it will happen November 15th at 6:30. And it'll be at the PNR Administration Building, which is at 2154 Landstown Road. So again, CAC, November 15th at 6:30 in the evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to report that the Planning and Performance Monitoring Committee met on November 8th. We had a very robust meeting and some very descriptive language concerning the positive behavior intervention and supports. And also the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy and the presentation that they gave, the EBA, the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy, you're going to really be excited about it. Our students from that academy are doing great works. I'm just reminded of their presentation when they went to the Hive, when the Hive had their grand opening. And we had four presentations from the EBA, this Academy, Kansas City Academy. And at that point in time, they were almost taken up to do business with the business audience that was there. They did really good, we were really proud of them. We also have very descriptive conversation about SEL and how PBI has come together. So when those presentations come forth, I'm almost sure that you're going to get something from that as well. And you're going to appreciate the work that our administration is doing in the background and how they're bringing in the components of the parents and the students in these particular presentations. Also, as the Chair for the Legislative Committee, I just want to let my colleagues know that I've been in conversation with most, if not all, of City Council concerning the new district team of the zone of Virginia Beach. Didn't get a lot of direct response from them, those that did return my call. But I informed them of some of the things that you all had told me that you might want to see, and especially about the maps. They are still, the calendar or the, the thoughts are still out about the calendar because they have not pacifically targeted and put us in them as well. They're still having conversations concerning the map. So hopefully, they had a closed session tonight. So hopefully, in that closed session, we were on their agenda and we would get some information to help us better move forward with our next stance for elections. Thank you.
Mrs. Franklin again.
I just want to congratulate Ms. Felton on the point, sorry, did I start it? As our VSBA representative, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Tidewater Regional Chair for VSBA. The vote took place, the meeting was just last evening, very late yesterday afternoon.
And we have 18 divisions in our region, so that means I have to communicate with all 18. But I'm looking forward to it. And as I said during the nomination, that I do honor and respect your having your vote of confidence for me taking on this task. And I do intend to be very transparent with what we do, have transparency there as well, and to engage with you, the things that we are doing and how we're moving out, and always being accountable for the work that I'm going to do. So thank you so much. Words cannot express to know that my entire board voted for me to take on this great task. Thank you so much.
And last, there's a few committee meetings tomorrow. I'll start with announcing governance at 9 o'clock. And since this falls under the realm of governance, just to confirm to everybody that there'll be four of us at the VSBA convention in Williamsburg, that'll take place before our next school board meeting, I think. Yes. And we'll be looking forward to reporting back to you all. Mrs. Riggs? The committee, committee announcement for?
Well, yeah, we have our committee, Policy Committee, meeting at 11:00 tomorrow, so.
All right then, that brings us back to item 17, we're returning to workshop format. And we had a few in the queue to just finish up on, I have to go back here. Ah, yes. Item D was the facility use. Okay, so Ms. Franklin, take it away for us.
Okay, so I did actually want to just say that I do agree, actually, with Ms. Owens' comments about, I thought you brought up a very good point about the fact that when we do put out the committee or the school agenda, that it is going to create a situation where people might want to come and talk about that. So I do want to agree with that. And particularly, and I was looking for my notes on, sorry. I can't remember now. But particularly since we do have, you know, the opportunity to give a little bit of time to allow the community to be able to weigh in. So I would agree that the 10-day requirement is a little bit aggressive considering that we only have Thursday to, so I was going to ask, it wouldn't be appropriate to lessen that time too after the agenda is put out?
Well, can we ask Jack to comment on how realistic it is to, or not to reduce the number of days?
So rather than ask Jack to answer that, I'd like to defer and get back to you on that. I mean, it's a regulatory issue, so we can change it. But I think there's some issues we need to work through in terms of the process, that the workflow that that goes through. And so I don't want to say yes and then have somebody on the staff turn around and say, hold on, there's a reason that can't happen. But yes, I think likely we can do that. But remember, if we do that, we're doing that for every facility request. And there was a reason that was originally set at 10 days because there was a sense of the workflow that it took for the request to get to the principal, the principal to make a decision, to have that decision, sometimes vetted by their supervisor, going through risk management. So there is a process.
Dr. Spence, could the regulation have a separate distinction for this building?
I need to talk with our team, so I'm not prepared to give you a full answer. And I guess it's a short version.
I was just, I actually found my notes. Since it is a first come, first served basis, that is the reason why I was thinking that, I mean, if we get a request and they don't get it in quickly enough, you know, after the agenda has been posted, it is a first come, first served. So therefore, if they have, if we have enough groups that would want to do it, that they would have to be the first one, you know, the first five or whatever, to be able to weigh in on that request. So anyway, so that's.
And to be clear, we're talking about the count starting with Wednesday, the day the agenda's posted, not, we don't need the full packet posted date, but the agenda. Wednesday, the agenda gets posted to the public. Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we're talking about that day, that date, not the next date. Okay. But thank you for exploring that. Okay. Ms. Owens? Okay.
And I just wanted to weigh in on the time change versus the rest of the facility use stuff. I know there was mention of only having that for this building, but I would ask that perhaps that shorter timeframe be for other locations as well, for expressive activities only. For instance, if, God forbid, we had a situation with a student, something happened and students wanted to do a memorial gathering at the school or somewhere, for expressive activities to be able to have a 10-day thing, are we saying that they absolutely, there's no other, is there a emergency fast track for things that are reactionary in expressive nature? Or is there just that we're not doing anything expressive that can be reactionary because it's going to be three weeks later?
I think the answer to that in the moment would be, those are typically just handled on a case-by-case basis with common sense from the person who's supervising the building. And that's always been the case. This form has been in place for, you know, 30 years. And I think that's always been the case. And I don't think any of you have ever heard contrary, so.
Right, and we haven't. I just wanted to make sure that now that we are putting something different in place and adding these additional rules to it, that we're still being mindful of times where reactionary expressive situations may be appropriate.
Yeah. And again, just remembering that, you know, depending on the situation, right? So you may have protests planned where you might want heightened security and that might require retaining that heightened security and having the time to achieve that. And that's after you get the request and it circulates through the workflow process. So there's a lot there. And if you just, you know, pick a random day to shorten it or a timeframe to shorten it, then, you know, that may or may not work versus saying, you know, maybe we can just look at the regulatory language and say that, you know, exceptions to that will be decided by the building supervisor, which allows for exceptions, which is equally important.
Any further discussion on this right now? All right then, it looks like we're ready to proceed with the final workshop presentation on COVID health and safety.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Dr. Sultanir will be providing today's update. Dr. Welch, the Acting Director for Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, was with us earlier, she's not able to be with us now. I will be updating you on contact tracing and community transmission data, vaccination progress, and a new COVID testing opportunity for our students. This graph is similar to the last brief but includes recent updates. It displays the weekly data for transmission in schools. The number of cases are in the vertical and they're broken up by weeks in the horizontal. And light blue, you have the number of times that the disease was most likely transmitted in schools or as part of a school-related activity like athletics. Remember that the term outbreak only means that the disease was passed from one person to another. In most cases, the disease was only passed to one other person. However, there were times where one person transmitted it to more than one other. The number in dark blue shows the total number of people affected as a result of in-school transmission. As of November 7th, 59 people have acquired COVID-19 due to in-school transmission. At the last school board meeting, we reported that there was only one connected case for the week of October 18th through the 24th. During that brief, I highlighted that due to the nature of the disease and contact tracing, that number has had a chance of going up as it takes days for symptoms to develop and it takes time to get tested and receive the results. You can see now that we have two identified cases affecting three people during that week. The epidemiologist team populates the data when it becomes available. This is just an example of how the data can lag by a week or two. Overall, we continue to see low numbers of connected cases. The decreasing trend in overall positive cases in schools has stabilized over the last few weeks. 684 total positive case, total positive students, relatively small number for the over 63,000 students we serve, 141 positive staff. On this slide, dark blue indicates the number of people who were required to quarantine. Light blue are the number who were exempt from quarantine because they were fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, or they had COVID within the last 90 days. It will take some time for our elementary school students to become fully vaccinated, which is why there's a low number where quarantine was not required. A little better percentage for our middle schoolers, 23%. High school students were exempt about 48% of the time, and staff were exempt from quarantine 75% of the time. This is an updated slide showing the rate at which close contacts went on to test positive for COVID. For the group of students exempt from quarantine, only five of 831 went on to test positive for COVID, that's 0.6%. Of the 3,236 students quarantined, 46 developed COVID, that's a rate of 1.42%. We also have staff listed here vaccinated, close contacts went on to test positive about 1.81% of the time, and unvaccinated, those who were required to quarantine about the same rate at 1.87%. One week ago, we began allowing volunteers and visitors into our buildings, and local field trips are now authorized. According to our plan, we need to monitor our COVID data to see if there was any increase in cases that can be attributed to those changes. If not, we'll be in a position to evaluate removing another layer of mitigation. We have strong data that supports the potential to modify quarantine as part of our layered mitigation strategy. Those discussions are ongoing with Virginia Beach Department of Public Health. By the next school board meeting on the 23rd, we will have had a full three weeks to evaluate any potential increase in cases due to allowing visitors and volunteers into our buildings and allowing local field trips. We look forward to sharing more about that at the next school board meeting. All right, so that's in-school data. This slide shows the level of community transmission in the city of Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach remains in the substantial category for level of transmission with 71.56 new cases per 100,000 in the last seven days and a percent positivity of 5.1. Next to those numbers are gray, you can see what was reported at the last school board meeting. We continue to trend lower over the past two weeks, just at a lesser rate. And here are the vaccination numbers for Virginia Beach, slow, steady upward trend. Last week, the Director of the CDC approved the Pfizer vaccine for those five to 11 years of age. We quickly communicated a plan that you see here to support vaccinating our students. This is only one of several avenues for this group to be vaccinated. And we shared other opportunities when we communicated with our families. Our plan includes two elementary school vaccination clinics per day, Monday through Friday, one on Saturday. After three weeks, we'll deliver second doses at the same schools. The clinics will be open at night for approximately two hours and Saturdays for four hours. This vaccine, as a reminder, is a specific for our younger population, so these clinics are currently intended to only serve that target five to 11 population. are currently intended to only serve that target five to eleven population. Turnout was good last night, so we only had one night. We had a second night tonight, so I have the data for last night. These clinics are designed to, to deliver over about a hundred and fifty doses, and Virginia Beach Department of Public Health was able to deliver a hundred and fifty vaccinations at Cook and a hundred and sixty-three at Parkway. This is all made possible by Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, and we continue to appreciate their support. I would like to acknowledge Bob Engel and his team. They have been providing tremendous vaccination support for Virginia Beach City Public School and Virginia Beach as a whole for almost a year now. They have a tremendous team. I want to further recognize our principals and other leaders at elementary schools. Casey Conger at Cook and Dr. Katie Catania at Parkway were both at their respective clinics last night, giving out positive energy that we have grown accustomed to from our elementary school leaders. It really helps bring down the stress level for our kids when they see those friendly, familiar faces. At the last meeting, I told you that we were continuing to refine our COVID testing program, that we intended to implement diagnostic testing for symptomatic students and staff during the second quarter. Virginia Department of Health has contracted with EMed using the Binex Now test to provide schools with virtually guided rapid antigen home tests. This home test uses an Ablis swab to return results in about fifteen minutes and has been authorized by the FDA under emergency use authorization. Students with COVID-like symptoms will be sent home with an EMed Binex Now test kit for at-home proctored testing. This can ease the burden on families by providing a more convenient method of testing, and it will expedite the contact tracing process. Here is the criteria used to determine COVID-like symptoms. Two of any of the systems listed on the top and one of the symptoms listed on the bottom of the slide. I'll give you a moment to take a look at it. Students can return when fever-free for twenty-four hours without fever-reducing medication. Symptoms have improved, and they have completed a Binex Now test within forty-eight hours. Or, they may decline the Binex Now test and provide a return-to-school note with alternative diagnosis. Or, they may decline the Binex Now test and complete a ten-day isolation at home. If the test is positive, the student will remain out of school for ten days from the onset of symptoms or as directed by the case investigator. The positive test will be reported to Virginia Department of Health by EMed. If the test is negative, parents should report the result to the school nurse, and the student may return to school as long as the student has no fever for twenty-four hours without fever-reducing medication and symptoms have improved. No further testing is required as long as no other, as long as there are no further symptoms. These test kits were distributed to schools yesterday, and we will begin implementing this process on Monday, November fifteenth. This improvement is intended to ease the burden on families, to enable a swift and accurate determination of COVID risk, and facilitate an expeditious contact tracing process. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Saltner.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Chairwoman Rai, Vice Chair Melnick, I want to return, if I can, to the Virginia High School Athletic Vista Testing Program. The Vista Program is the Virginia School Screening Testing for Assurance, and it will start with our winter athletic season in all high schools. The Vista Program right now has seventy-eight committed public schools and nineteen private schools across the Commonwealth. Twenty-two school divisions and private schools have started testing, or like us, are scheduled to begin by November fifteenth. The aim of the testing program is to catch cases early and stop further transmission. There is no cost to families or to the school division as we work with our assigned vendor, Mako Medical Laboratories. Recall, we previously announced that our winter athletes would either need to be fully vaccinated, have had COVID-19 within the last ninety days, or submit to weekly testing as another means to address the greater chance of virus spread within the indoor setting. All tests are going to be conducted by Mako Medical Laboratories, our assigned vendor, and athletes that miss their weekly assigned test, a date will be required to undergo testing at one of our makeup sites, and I'll share that in just a few moments, in order for them to remain eligible to participate in practice or contests for the remainder of the week. Again, this process is designed to be an additional layer of our mitigation strategy for keeping our students, staff, and families safe, particularly as we enter the indoor sports season. Mako Medical Lab includes a COVID-19 PCR test. The process includes a shallow nasal swab taken by Mako Medical trained staff. All swabs will be tested by Mako Medical Lab, and results are expected back within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Mako Medical Lab staff adhere to all HIPAA guidelines and protections. Parents who opt in to notification during the consent process will be notified via email or text of all test results. The school nurse and Virginia Department of Health will also receive the results. In the event of a positive case, the school nurse will notify the student activities coordinator, and the student athlete will be out until they are cleared to return. It's important to note that student athletes may continue to participate while they are waiting on their testing results. Since our last board meeting on the twenty-sixth, much work has been taking place behind the scenes. We are in the process of hiring, and we have just recently hired several testing nurses and mitigation specialists to assist schools through the testing process. We're excited to announce that we have hired the retired Virginia Beach Fire Department Chief Steve Lesinski and James Ramsey as two of our testing coordinators. You may know the names. They both have extensive experience with coordinating the testing and vaccination process held at the Virginia Beach Convention Center this past year. These two individuals will serve as primary contacts for testing vendors and to facilitate the testing activities at all of our high schools. On October twenty-seventh, a school division communication went out to our families, sharing details of the vaccination and testing process. The following evening, BBCPS hosted a vaccine information webinar with representatives from Children's Hospital of King's Daughters, the Virginia Department of Public Health, and Dr. Spence. Also, each high school shared school-specific information with families, which provided information on the testing process, a link to Mako Medical Laboratories website, a link to the school registration site, and access to the Vista consent form, and then contact information for the school nurse and student activities coordinators. Our school nurses are finishing up the process, but they began collecting vaccine information, confirmation of COVID-19 for some within the last ninety days, and the Vista consent forms. The expectation is to have all these forms submitted by tomorrow, November ten, so schools can begin to finalize preparation for testing based on the number of students involved. Recall, the testing is slated to begin on November fifteen. High school principals, student activities coordinators, and the Department of Student Activities worked on developing a testing schedule that ensured students would not lose class time to be tested. Holiday breaks would not impact the testing schedule, and locations were grouped in terms of geographics. I'll let you study that for a moment. Mako Medical Laboratories will deploy two teams scheduled by location. For example, on the chart that you see, on Mondays, one Mako Medical Lab team will travel from Salem to Landstown and finish at Green Run. While the other team will travel from First Colonial to Cox and finish at Bayside. As you look at the slide, you'll also see a two-hour window from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. This allows for our students to be tested during our third block lunch. Wednesday will involve school makeup sites located at Landstown High and Princess Anne High School. Principals and student activities coordinators chose these two sites due to the proximity to other school locations, minimizing the travel to these sites. It's important to note, the schedule has been developed knowing that we do not have the knowledge of the number of students that will need to be tested. That is starting to become clear as we finish up the collection process. The testing coordinators will be prepared to make the necessary adjustments based on any numbers conditions. What I am going to present to you now, I wished that we had been able to present to you prior to your review of the reversion funds, because herein was the presentation that you were to see before you saw that. Take a look, if you will, and I'm going to start with the last two bullets, and if you'll look at the highlighted area, continued investigation of other relief measures. So, we'll go back to those, but in the meantime, please know that it was our intent for you to see this information prior to you seeing the reversion fund information, where we were going to share our exploration and bringing it back to your next board meeting. I'll take you back to that last board meeting. I shared the central office substituting initiative for Mondays and Fridays, and I want you to know that the numbers I shared with you have grown dramatically. We had, we now have six hundred and ten days of central office staff who are subbing at schools, and four hundred and sixty-seven staff members who are available, who have stepped up to sub in classified positions from office staff to custodians to teacher assistants. Although this support began on November one, teachers still must cover classes when subs can't be found. So, to further provide relief and free teachers from this burden, an additional permanent sub has been funded for each building. We also reported in our last meeting, we could continue, we would continue to examine new initiatives. You heard tonight that our planned second semester pilot for Canvas for our secondary teacher participants has been made optional, and we had an employee Wise Time and Attendance Initiative transition that was to have been rolled out right about now. It's an electronic time sheet that would require some training and some adjustment, and we have made the decision not to roll out that initiative until July one. Most importantly, and what I want to conclude with, is that central support continues to investigate other measures to provide school relief. In fact, we spent our Monday solidly on this. When Dr. Spence cited some examples of one thing leading to another wrinkle, that was indeed our day on Monday. Currently, a review of our ESAR funds is underway to determine and to examine subpay rate and incentives for employees' current and perspective. And at our next workshop, I will report on these measures. Would like to take any questions that you may have at this time. And again, I certainly had hoped that we would have heard the last bullet prior to your discussion on funding.
Mrs. Anderson.
Well, we continue to hear parents state that they don't want their children to wear masks during PE. So, it was my understanding that if they're outside, they do not wear masks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, the whole idea, that if they're inside for PE, if they're a certain distance apart, they can take their mask off? How does that work?
I'm going to let Mr. Freeman respond to that.
Yes, if they're participating in activities for PE, even indoors, they should be able to remove their mask.
Okay, so the whole idea of somebody standing there and saying, "My child's running, and they can't breathe, and they're running hard," that is a false accusation. Is that correct?
I don't think, I don't think we can say one way or the other. I think what we would need to say as a reminder for the board and for our community is if you have a concern about that, if you think that's happening, contact your school's principal and make them aware. And then if board members are aware of specific schools where they're hearing that that's happening, please make me aware so that I and my team can investigate that. But I don't think I would say it's a false statement. I think we would need to look into it.
Okay. So, so for any parent who states that, "My child is running and has trouble breathing," we should state to them, "Please contact your child's principal and inquire into, you know, what's really going on."
Yes, ma'am.
I used to tell my kindergarten students, "I believe half of what you tell me, and I'll tell the parents, believe half of what they tell you." So, not that children lie, but sometimes their facts are not quite accurate, so.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I do think parents should go to the principal, but I also think that we should stop making statements that anytime somebody says something you don't like, it's false or it's misinformation, or they're lying. That was not okay.
I don't think I meant to state that people are lying, but there are, there are a lot of false accusations being thrown out here tonight. We can't answer them, but, you know, to stand up there and say, you know, "You don't allow us to volunteer in the schools." That's not true. People are volunteering in the schools as of November first.
Let's not get off topic, okay?
Excuse me. People are volunteering in the schools as of November first. We have volunteers allowed. They just need to contact the teacher or principal. So, that's not true, that, that there are no volunteers anymore. And it's also not true that they need to contact their principal if their child is saying, "I'm, you know, I can't breathe when I'm running," so.
And Dr. Saltner, I hope we haven't dismissed that parents can go to the teacher first.
Absolutely.
I mean, I hope we haven't.
Generally, the teacher holds the answer side.
I like to go through channels, and sometimes it's just easily resolved at that level. Okay. And Mrs. Weems.
I think this is a Mr. Freeman question. So, you had said that the next level of reducing mitigations was, and I forgot what you, the example that you gave was probably the next level. I wrote it down.
What I intended to say is, after we get through this round of, so we just eased visitors and volunteers as a layer of mitigation and field trips. So, the plan says that we monitor those for three weeks, and then we have an opportunity to evaluate another layer. And the data shows that there's, might be an opportunity there as it relates to our quarantine. So, those discussions are ongoing right now, but no changes would be able to be implemented for, until three weeks of data has been monitored. We started on the first of November with visitors and volunteers and field trips. So, that would be at about the next school board meeting where that data would be clear, hopefully. And then we would be able to have discussions about what's the next layer of mitigation that we want to look at.
Okay, so like, right now, do you have like a kind of mapped out with all your work with the Health Department, like kind of hierarchy of mitigation? Because obviously, the first, one of the first ones was to allow now visitors to volunteer, but no parents at lunch. So, can you tell me how far down the list is to make masks optional? I mean, are we talking about next spring? Or, do you, I mean, I would assume there's some sort of list that next time we'll let quarantine, and then maybe parents eat with kids at, at the lunch table. I mean, do you have some sort of, you know, list?
Yeah, so quarantine, to have a discussion about quarantine, that's a substantial layer of mitigation, have a discussion in and around removing. The context of quarantine is, you've seen the data as it relates to how infrequently the disease is being passed, given all of the other mitigation that we're doing. And the context of that is, that, we have that about a little bit over one and a half percent, about one and a half percent that go on to develop COVID is based on all of the mitigations that we have in place, including masking. So, you have that, what's relatively low level of risk that we're observing in our data. We also know that that quarantine process comes with, on average, about five days per student that gets identified for quarantine, that they're missing in-person learning. Our goal is to maximize in-person learning and to do it at low risk. So, that's all part of the discussion around quarantine. So, getting back to your question about, well, what's the timeline for other mitigations? If we were to go into and have this conversation about removing such a substantial layer of mitigation like quarantine, and we did that at the end of November, and you go into the holiday season, so I feel like we're giving you the brief a little bit in advance, but these are the considerations that go to and to.
these are the considerations that go to into it. We know that when you get into the holiday season, the numbers are going to go up, and the community transmission is going to go up. We just don't know what that rate is going to look like. So all that is going to impact decisions for later on. As it relates to masking, we know that is something that is on everybody's minds. When you're talking about priorities, these are all good discussions about what's the priority. When you talk about every child who's a close contact losing, on average, five days of in-person learning versus removing masks, that's a good discussion to have around what's the priority. So that's why, at this point in time, setting the stage for the next one to look at would be quarantine. We do not have a list of go this, 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 and this. Quarantine's a big one, and we want to make sure that if we were to go down that road to modify quarantine, that we get it right. Because if that doesn't, isn't, if we don't get these things right, and it goes in the other direction, we'd now just cause more, I don't have a better word than, pain and suffering on our community if we were to need to walk back and re-implement a mitigation that we had recently removed. And there's some risk in and around the holiday season, knowing that community transmission is likely going to go up.
Okay.
I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, and I know it's difficult, especially when you're talking about so many different layers and the complexities of it all, but, you know, just kind of as board members, we get asked often, and it would be kind of nice to say, you know, "That's like way down the list, you know, we'll talk in the spring." You know, just to kind of get some sort of top rank, but.
And the last thing that I'll share, and Dr. Welch isn't here, so I'll do the best to share. I'm not a medical expert, but we stay in close contact with them. The data on the importance of masking, particularly in levels of high community transmission and other things, is strongly in favor of masking works. So as we're going into a holiday season, and really, the results that we're seeing in our school, the low transmission rate, masking is a substantial layer of that mitigation that is allowed that low rate of transmission. So again, we'll let our medical professionals provide more of that information, but just as context, that is a recurring theme that comes up every time that we do this. And if we are to remove a layer of mitigation, we're doing that based on all of the other mitigations that we have in place, and we need to stay strong with how we're executing those mitigations when we remove layers, so that we can effectively analyze how we're doing as we move forward.
And one more question with the, you know, I know that when you come back with a test, it's reported to the Department of Health. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so of the students that got COVID in the slides that you showed us, is it reported, or do we know how many of those students were hospitalized? Or is that proven information that doesn't?
We can check with our epidemiologist to get you the data on that. I don't have good data for you, but we can follow up to see.
Oh, yeah, I would like to know how many of those were hospitalized.
So the question, if I make sure I understand it right, is students, and how many of our positive students went on to be hospitalized due to COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Owens.
Okay, so I just had, I think, just two questions from the update. I'm interested in the EMed Binax, the at-home swab test. If you're able to just, I guess, talk a little bit more about how that works? And do you have any information that would have been for the public health person, but about how the now-at-home testing may or may not be impacting the number of positives that we're seeing in the community? Are those at-home tests being reported to VDH? And are those still counted in the overall numbers that we're seeing?
So I can speak to the Binax test will obviously be reported. That's what we talked about in the slides, the at-home reporting. I'm not sure. We have Heidi Suwala is on the line with us. Heidi, are you able to provide any information on that?
The at-home tests that are not proctored and that are not downloaded to the Health Department, that are not reported to the Health Department. So it depends on the person doing the test, if they report it to the Health Department or not.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. And so these ones being proctored, does that mean it requires, like our students are to go on Zoom and somebody is watching them? Is that how it works?
Yeah, and Ms. Suwala, do you want to step through the process of how that works?
Yes, they would download an app. They would then be put into a queue. They would have the test proctored by an agent, a certified agent for the testing. The parent of the minor would then provide identification, and the camera on the cellphone or the computer or the tablet would then be looking at the person doing the test with the proctored agent, and then also to show the test result as it became positive about 15 minutes later. And that report then is sent directly to the Health Department.
Okay, thank you. That's pretty cool, and I'm glad that we have an option, because it is difficult to get to the testing site. So that's a wonderful option to get our kids back into school quicker if they can.
Are we done, folks? All right, thank you, gentlemen. So that adjourns our formal meeting.